One more button here. I'm Mr. Long.
I think I saw Peter come on.
I will keep, all right. I see him right there. We'll just, uh, here for here. Mr. Gates, you're our co-host if you want to, um.
I don't know what happened. First time that's happened, I couldn't get on. I type it in manually.
Problem. We didn't want to start without you, Peter. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the February seventh, twenty twenty-two Situate School Committee meeting to order. This meeting will be recorded and posted following the meeting on, uh, A C T V U two page. Public comments will be available tonight through Zoom. And community members can also reach out to me at Mlong@sit.org after the, uh, meeting with any comments or questions that they might have. And so we'll start off by doing a roll call vote to, um, start the meeting. Uh, Long, yes, uh, Dr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And Ms. Friendelini?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so the first item on the agenda tonight is celebrating student success with Situate High School. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Dr. McGuire.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a video to show tonight, and in the video, there are twenty students in grades nine through twelve who will share information about their favorite classes and some information about the class or its connections and interests, uh, to their interests and goals. They'll share how they find enjoyment in a specific subject area. They've found connections to the real world and the power of language. They are proud of their increased problem-solving skills, the ability to adapt to any number of situations and scenarios, and the opportunity to give back to their community through the lens of their academic passions. Students have built confidence and rigor through their coursework, the experiences they have had, and the connections they make in relevant and engaging activities. Please enjoy the S H S celebration of student learning.
Dr. McGuire, I just want you to stop sharing real quick. Maybe I'll do one moment here. Let's do this.
Hi, my name is Arlie Swinson. I'm a child grader, and my favorite class is three D art one with Miss Space. I'm a fairly academic student, but I love having that free time to express myself. And Miss Space is really easygoing and she's really supportive, and I don't really think of myself as an artist, but I get to come and decompress in her classroom and put together cool artworks. I can play. I actually made, um, a ghost to, um, this year that has a witch hat, and I got to bring it and hold it up to myself.
Hi, I'm Audrey Brennan. Um, the class I learned most from here is S H S. I've gotten the most out of it because I'm a very musical person and played.
I think we lost the volume.
Seth?
I learned a lot of helpful skills to help me in all of their subjects.
My name is Casey, and my favorite class right now is Spanish class. And I really love Spanish because it really challenges me to, to really think about what I'm saying. And my teacher really inspires me to work harder. And I firmly believe that if I work harder, that I might be able to go to a Spanish-speaking country one day and be able to speak, um, at least pretty well.
All right. Hi, my name is Lily Reese. I'm a senior, and this is my A P art, um, presentation. My concentration is about how the joy of happiness perpetuates throughout life. I found that my engagement with A P art has been a really inviting experience because it's, it's been exciting to work with new materials and learn new skills from Miss Vicki, and I find it's developing myself as an artist and as a thinker more than other art classes.
Okay.
I'm also taking A P literature, A P psychology, and A P statistics. I hope that I'm prepared to move on to a university level. I'm looking at attending a bigger college, and I find that classes which require more out of you will probably more likely prepare me than, uh, less rigorous classes.
Uh, I like journal journalism so much because of how, like, team impact it is and like how we all, like, work together to, like, come to a common goal. Uh, my name's Billy Burner. I'm a senior. Um, and I like to learn a lot because it really teaches you how to be on top of your own work, be independent, which is a, uh, great life skill going forward.
Uh, I'm Samantha Roman. I'm a senior. I like journalism because you can kind of write about whatever you want, whatever your interests are. I feel like that's the only class where you really get to do that.
All right. Uh, I'm Dominic Walsh, and I'm in, uh, Miss Vicki's art class right now, working on a, uh, patch doll project I did myself. Uh, I always have a free chance to come down into art, and the teachers are wicked nice, and whatever you're drawn to will let you and help you, like, do what you want to do, and with that freedom, I can do all the art I want to and aspire to do. So this is a self-made project that I've been working on, and I have inspiration and help from all my teachers. The doll is started as a model doll for drawing, which then turned into a trash doll, which was made of old art supplies such as newspaper, magazines, um, paper towels. And so that's what a lot of the doll is made up of, old art supplies and old things I could find from the art room. Um, I don't know yet. Uh, for now, it's just a work in progress, but after, I'd like to see something be done with it. I'm thinking of art school. I'm taking a tour soon of, um, a couple of colleges, and I'm gonna see what happens from there.
Um, hi, my name's Anna Radel. I'm a junior at, um, Sigus, and my favorite class currently is A P Lang. I think the, like, articles, I mean, I just read this article about a immigrant that I think is really relevant and like teaches you how to use language in a way that like can be used for the rest of your life, and especially someone who's really into liberal arts and writing and reading. I think that they develop a lot of skills personally, and you get to have a lot of experience and different ideas on how to express them.
Hi, my name is Imani, uh, Summerbell. I'm a tenth grader, and I chose was Devon Shark Tank because, um, I just feel like I'm able to express myself in the business market, and I never thought that I would actually be interested in business at all, but somehow I am, uh, I was able to do my fundraiser, um, getting gaining socks, new socks, and, um, canned foods for the homeless communities and the elderly communities, which is maybe feel better about myself, but also like something I definitely want to continue in the future. And we'll be able to go to, like, um, actual district places where we can talk about, um, business and scenarios and stuff like that. So it's just really fun.
Are you attending the DECA?
Yeah, I'm going this week.
Talk about that.
Um, so I'm attending the district, the DECA, the DECA district, um, competitions, and I'm doing, I'm being a partner. I'm partnering with Emmanuel, and we're doing, um, sports and entertainment marketing. And we just go there, wear like original professional clothing, and we come up with a scenario. Well, they give us a scenario, and then we talk about, um, how you can, like, they give us a problem, and we find a way to fix that, and then we present to someone who's actually in the market. So it's really cool because you get, like, really experience, um, real experience in real time to actually talk to someone who's working in that field and loves what they're doing. So, I don't know. That's really exciting when it comes, but yeah.
Okay.
I'm J.J. Adams.
I'm Sam Bennett.
And we're just very appreciative of the class. A P Calc goes B C. It, um, really just helps us find solutions to problems in ways we wouldn't always think of, since there's a lot that goes into these, like, massive mathematics problems, but working around and finding shortcuts instead is just a really good skill to have.
Absolutely. Problem-solving skills that we get from the class of business marketing is our thing that we're definitely going to use in the future. Uh, I hope to go into mathematics in the future when I study in college and hopefully when I go into the real business. Um, but overall, we've gotten a lot from the class, and I really appreciate what it, what it's done for us as students.
Uh, in my A P statistics class, we did a, an assignment called Philadelphia Justice, where we examined, um, court cases in Philadelphia and whether, uh, the statistics backed up, um, justification of, uh, white versus black, um, incarcerations. And that's gonna, that's gonna set me up with the problem-solving skills in order to succeed at the next level in college.
My name is Lisa Kinsley, and my favorite subject is math. Uh, through math team and math class throughout the years, I've really learned to love math, um, and I've really gained an appreciation for it, and, um, I, I hope it prepares me to be a math major and have a career in, like, math.
I'm Michael Gant. I'm a senior. My favorite class is physics, uh, because it challenges me. I like how people connect to real-world situations, and I like how you can find different solutions to different problems.
Hello, my name is Molly Ryan. I'm a junior, and one of the classes I enjoyed is my A P Bio class. We work with our lab partners, and most recently, we had a lab where we had to design it ourselves and answer the problem to our, uh, see if our hypothesis is correct. Um, I think that A P Bio has taught me that I'm really interested in how things in our bodies works. Um, and so that's definitely something I can use when figuring out my major for college.
Okay. I'm Oliver Sherman, and Miss Gutierrez is really nice, and I really like Spanish because she's a good teacher.
Hi, my name is Sarah Weimer. I'm a senior, and one course in which I really liked to take was A P Lang. I thought A P Lang was absolutely eye-opening, not only on the power of language and how you can control it and just how much power that gives you. Um, but it was eye-opening on reading between the lines, not only of just a book, but of actual real-world scenarios.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sophia Marshall, and, um, throughout my time at S H S, I've definitely learned so much stuff about myself through the classes that I've taken, such as A P Bio, Physics, and even this Anatomy class this year has given me so much direction in what I want to do in the future, and I'm actually the president of the Red Cross Club as well, and I really am passionate about giving back to our community, and I've learned so much through the various science classes of ways I can give back through science. And sitting in classes like that have excited me about my future and possible, like, opportunities in research in college and definitely, like, cool stuff in the future, and even during the pandemic, like, with all the negativity that is obviously, like, kept us in quarantine, but there's just also so much ability for innovation and just to give back and just, like, support our community through science in different ways you're passionate about.
All right, ready? Hi, my name is Victor Baudger. I am a junior here, uh, and I'm gonna talk about my virtual computer science principles class. It's very interesting because it's all online, so it's kinda, I have to kinda work with myself to get it going, and it's an A P class, so there's a lot of kinda hard work and not really anyone to talk to. You know, they have the online check-ins, which you kind of really have to force yourself to go to sometimes, which is an interesting way to kinda, I, I find myself kinda preparing for college because, you know, you don't know the teacher, they don't really know you, uh, but I'm still learning a lot. I've learned how to code a computer, code apps. It's very interesting. Um, I'm also taking A P Language and Composition as a junior here, and it's really interesting, a lot different than other English classes. We talk about commas and semicolons, which I didn't really know anything about. Um, and it's, it's a lot cooler than, you know, talking about Shakespeare, in my opinion, but, uh, overall, I think A P classes and just all the classes I'm taking this year are really interesting, and I think that they're preparing me well for my future, wherever that ends me.
All right. Hi, my name is Bill Sams. Uh, I'm in robotics. And something I've learned in robotics is to learn to do better at what you're doing, uh, through trial and error and reference mistakes. Uh, well, I know that whatever I'm doing, I'll be able to figure out, like, what I'm doing wrong, what I should do better, and I just like to keep improving what I'm doing.
So as you can see here, the students named such a range of interests in their classes. Uh, three D A P and independent study art, chorus and music, Spanish and journalism, A P Language, A P Lit, DECA Shark Tank Business Class, A P Psych, A P Physics, Bio, Anatomy, Robotics, Math, Computer Science, A P Calc, A P Stats, all as their favorite class. This is a robust menu of opportunities for students and also a series of courses that demonstrate that the class and subject matter is personal to each student in their personal and academic interests and post-secondary college and career goals. I'm proud to report that they are representative of so many Situate High School students who could each share their favorite story, class, or activity, and the lasting table, takeaways and impacts they have made. This is a credit to our teachers, our varied course in courses in core and elective areas, and our commitment to responding to student needs and interests in our course offerings. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this evening.
All right, and thank you for sharing that, uh, video with the rest of the time, Dr. McGuire. I, I agree there. I think it was interesting how, you know, each kid came up with something completely different, and not only talked about how it was gonna impact them today, but also how they're gonna take it into the future. So it was interesting to hear across a, a wide number of, uh, different subjects.
Hopefully, over time, we can connect that to, uh, Mrs. Rundle's presentation a few weeks ago, where we have our, our postgrads coming back and talking about their college and career experiences. This is a really nice, uh, reflection of where kids are at before they, they move on from here and then the next steps as well.
Yeah, no, I agree. That would be a great, um, connection that we can make as a district. Are there any questions or comments from the rest of the committee?
Just a comment from me, Mike. Uh, Lisa, that was great. Um, it actually totally lifted my spirits. I had a not a great day at, uh, you know, and as it is, we all have ups and downs, but that was really nice, once again, that the students came through and lifted, you know, my personal spirits. Um, I kinda just jotted down, I mean, some of the things that stuck out. You know, decompressing the first student on there said art class for her, her A P art was a place to decompress. I mean, that's like, that's it, you know? That's fantastic. And, you know, it's given the pandemic and given the stress level, the fact that students can identify a class that provides that for them, but it's also providing them with the academic opportunities for future and college and, you know, finding what fits for them and what they want to pursue is really, um, you know, that's educating the whole child right there. So, uh, that's fantastic. I mean, the, the other students said things like, I love this class because it gives me freedom to make, see what I want and what I want to do. Um, they mentioned rigor of their classes and how they were inspiring. Problem-solving skills for future, you, um, you know, learning so much about myself, um, excited about my future. I think this is kind of, um, I think Situate is at a good place and a turning point in terms of, you know, moving forward, dare I say, out of the pandemic mindset and into that kind of future forward-thinking. Let's get excited about what's next. You know, I love the rigor of, um, you know, that the kids described that they're experiencing at school. So that's, that's what we want to hear, you know, that the kids feel that the academics are strong and rigorous. So, thank you.
Okay, great. So you know the comments. Thank you again, uh, Dr. McGuire. Um, and the next item on our agenda is the Student Advisor's Report. So, you know, neither advisor is gonna be here tonight, so, uh, Dr. McGuire, I believe you're gonna read the report. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So last week, the Situate DECA chapter had a successful showing at the District, DECA District Competition, where twenty-four of our business students competed in various college and career-related category events. They were assessed on their general business and marketing knowledge by completing a hundred-question exam as well as two case study role-play scenarios. For the case studies, they were allotted thirty minutes to prepare onsite that addressed the role-play criteria. They presented their solutions to a volunteer business professional judge and were assessed using the DECA's criterion presentation rubrics. The case study role-play portion is an authentic performance-based learning experience for our students to apply and demonstrate their learned business skills. We had six students qualify for the DECA state-level competition held in March at the Marriott Copley in Boston, and several others received individual recognition for scoring in the top three of any of the three assessments. In addition, thirteen students from our year-long DECA marketing class, whose initiative is to create a business plan, a substantive project-based learning experience, which coincides with the DECA written project standards, also had their projects qualify for the state-level competition as well. This weekend, Model U N had twenty-nine students from all grades attend the Boston Conference of over one thousand students, and of those from S H S who attended, eighteen were first-time participants. One of our seniors won an award for her participation in her committee in the Daily Mail and the Press Corps, reporting on and responding to other committees through the weekend. Students prepared for weeks by researching and preparing position papers. They spent the weekend in their committees debating, negotiating, and collaborating with students from all over the country. Their topics included counterterrorism post nine eleven, the trade war between the U S and China, Iran-Israeli nuclear tensions, climate refugees, global vaccine equity, the glowing global popu, growing global popularity of cryptocurrency and cybersecurity. Allies Not Bystanders has been starting our mornings by reading an excerpt of information uh, in our announcements about an underrepresented historically or culturally significant Black senior. Celebrate Black History Month. The senior class had an assembly today for a brief information session regarding the events of their last semester of senior year. Everything looks great so far from the senior prom on April twenty-ninth to senior week and graduation on June third. Student Council is holding a spirit week next week before February break to boost excitement during the mid-winter rut and before the vacation. Eighth graders came up to the high school last Wednesday and had a chance to ask student leaders about their experiences and learn general school trivia. This past weekend, at the Patriot League Swim Meet, girls finished third behind Duxbury and Hangham. Paige Blackley earned a Patriot League championship in the fifty-three. The boys' team finished behind Duxbury in second place. The two hundred freestyle relay earned a Patriot League championship and qualified for states. The team included Ryan Johnson Reese, Matthew Short, Ruben Tompkins, and Brian Hickson. And earned a Patriot League championship in the fifty and one hundred freestyle. Boys' basketball played this Saturday at the Garden and pulled off a seventy-five, seventy-two win against Marshfield. That was followed by an exciting three-two overtime win in hockey, also against Marshfield. Gymnastics had a quad meet over the weekend over, against Silver Lake Pembroke and Whitman Hansen, and won against W H. Wrestling will compete this upcoming Saturday in the Sectionals in Duxbury. In girls' basketball, with the record current of nine wins, five losses, plays home tomorrow versus Plymouth South after missing a game to Friday's weather last week. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McGuire. And this is actually a great segue from the student learning that you just did, where we saw the things that kids are doing in the classroom, and now we see all the things kids are doing out of the classroom, and it's just great to see that, you know, encompass view into what our students are doing on a day-to-day basis. Thank you for, uh, that detail.
Thank you.
Mike, can I just add, add something to Lisa's report? I just wanna, you know, we, the bus drivers can't go unnoticed for all the driving they did this weekend to get the kids to all the events. I know I was dropping off and picking up, so, um, I just want to give them a sailor shout-out. Because without them, the kids couldn't get to all these fantastic events.
Great point. Thanks, Janice. All right, um, we are gonna take one thing out of order for the agenda just before we get into the, uh, all the, all the different presentations, so I'm gonna move the Acceptance of Gift um, up to next on the agenda. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Nurse, Nurse Leader Kelly Rich.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, I just wanted to share, um, some great information that, um, two of our parents from Happily Engage, Sarah Bell and Ashley Schumacher, uh, who also own Rising Tide, which is a local apparel company here in Situate, have reached out to offer, um, a very generous gift to the nurses in recognition of all they've done, all that everybody has done during the pandemic, um, and have gifted them with a session at the Situate Salt Cave here, uh, in town next month. And I know that, um, the nurses, on behalf of them, everybody was so overwhelmed um, with gratitude for their generosity and kind and thoughtful gift that this was, and it will be extremely enjoyed. So, big thank you to them.
Great. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions or comments on the, the donation, I'll accept the motion, um, on it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept a donation from Rising Tide with great appreciation.
I'll, I'll second it.
And I think it's a great idea. It's awesome.
Yeah, that is great. Uh, so do a roll call vote. Uh, Long, yes? Uh, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Friendelini?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
And Dr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for presenting that, uh, research.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so going back to the regular order in the agenda, the first thing we have under new business is the out-of-country field trip request to Ecuador. I shall turn it over to, back to Dr. McGuire as well as, uh, Ms. Driscoll and Ms. Brady.
Thank you. Um, as we navigate COVID, we'd like to get on the radar of, um, pursuing an out-of-country field trip for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That's something we've done in the past, and we're really excited to bring back. Uh, so I'd like to turn it over to Sarah Brady of our Word Language Department and Charlie O'Driscoll from our Science Department to share more details.
If it's okay with everybody, I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. We have a couple slides prepared, uh, for the meeting today. Oh, I haven't done this in so long. Here we go. Good. All right. Um, I'm Charlie O'Driscoll, and I'm here with Sarah, and we also have, um, Maggie Lenahan of E F with us today to present to you guys about our next trip that we're really excited to present to you.
Um, so hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Brady. I'll get us started off. Um, as Dr. McGuire said, I'm a Spanish teacher at Situate High School. Um, this is my eighth year there. I've traveled with students four times in the past, um, twice on the Spanish exchange, um, and twice to Costa Rica with Charlie in the past, so we have some experience doing this, um, and we are excited to hopefully get back into it. It's been a while. Um, so I just wanted to start out and kind of explain why we chose E F to go with this time. Um, as I said, we've traveled to Costa Rica twice in the past. Um, with each of those trips, we've used a different tour company. Um, and, you know, we had good experiences, but we felt like there was maybe more to offer. Um, and then I had the awesome opportunity in, uh, the fall of twenty nineteen to travel to Panama with E F um, on a trip sponsored and all put together by Maggie, who's here with us tonight. Um, and I traveled with many other teachers from the surroundings, uh, towns, surrounding, um, area of Massachusetts. Um, and we really focused on just kind of all things student travel. We talked about, um, creating global citizenship programs at our schools and how kind of travel plays into that. Um, so with the end goal of that global citizenship program in mind within our department, um, we are hoping to get back to some student travel, and we are hoping to do that with E F. Um, I had an amazing experience with them, traveling with them in Panama and kind of getting the experience of what a student would get on those types of trips, um, and I have no doubt that they are absolutely the best choice to go with. So we're really excited to be, um, working with E F going forward. Um, so just a little bit more about why E F, um, they have gone really above and beyond with the kind of COVID precautions. Um, there is, you know, local support. We have staff, um, twenty-four-seven in various countries that are available to help us. Um, so whether we're, you know, dealing with pre-departure things here, or we're dealing with some issue when we are in Ecuador, um, we have the support staff to help with that, uh, you know, any, any place along the way, which is really helpful. Um, their health standards are really high. They're doing a lot to, um, ensure that we're staying in clean accommodations, that kids have access to what they need should issues arise. Um, and we travel twenty-four-seven with the tour director, who is, um, very well-first in the local things that we need to be aware of, um, and are just, you know, really kind of our eyes and ears when we are in another country. Um, so this is a map. We just kinda wanted to highlight to you guys how many other schools in our area already are in the works for planning trips. Um, so while it seems kind of crazy that we're already talking about student travel, um, this is a conversation that's going on at a lot of other schools around here. Um, so you guys can see on the map, all of those pink dots represent schools that have an upcoming trip either during this, uh, calendar year or next calendar year.
So, uh, Sarah and I have run in the last four years, I guess, two different trips to Costa Rica. Um, and really what we're after when we choose a place to travel is, um, you know, an enriching experience for students, both with culture and language immersion, um, with Spanish, and also um, with environmental science and biology and ecology, and really just, um, getting to dive into the kind of STEM side of things, too. So when we were discussing the possibility of, you know, doing this trip again, you know, revisiting student travel, we wanted to really dig in even more with those STEM opportunities and talked a lot about maybe other locations that could offer even more opportunities to tie in those themes with students, and we are really excited um, to potentially be traveling to the Galapagos instead of Costa Rica this time. Um, so it is a trip to a few different islands of the Galapagos Islands and, um, Quito, the capital. Um, we would be visiting the equator, which is really cool. Um, and really what we're most excited about is kind of just real-world applications and importance of biodiversity and ecosystem tolerance. Um, students will get to experience, um, island biogeography close up. Um, students will get to experience um, island biogeography close up and hands-on. And really see the stuff that I've been talking about in my ninth grade biology class for every year. Um, and really dig into um, real-life research and its impacts at the Darwin Research Center, which we're very excited about. As far as dates for the trip, we are um, hoping to get this trip to fit just nicely into February vacation like we've done in the past. Hopefully, everything should work out with minimal time lost at school. We don't want kids to be missing any class as usual. Um, so these are the dates that we're proposing is that um, February vacation is a nine-day tour, so it should, it should fit nicely in that week. Um, just a, a little bit more about everything that's included, just like other tour companies we've gone with before. Um, pretty much everything is covered. Um, and we also have a lot of support from EF. Um, where we were anticipating that you may have some questions about um, safety like you have in the past. As well as everyone who's involved and insurance for cancellation purposes. If, you know, there's a lot of question marks out there still about travel. So we're really excited about EF because of really the different options for that kind of protection that they offer. Um, yeah, I think that's it unless Maggie or Sarah have anything to add or any questions.
Yeah, Maggie, if you could just jump in and kind of um, highlight the insurance and travel protection plans, I think that would be.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you all for having me here. Again, I'm Maggie Lenahan. Um, Sarah and I have been talking about planning this tour for a long time and we're so excited. Um, now that I'm working with Sarah and Charlie to actually hopefully get this off the ground for twenty-twenty-three. But obviously, there is still um, a lot of questions in our world today. So that's why this is so important for all of you and all parents that learn about this trip down the road. To know exactly what their options are, um, about our flexibility and about the protection plans that we have in place. So the first thing you see on the left for our group, our peace of mind program is something that's included for free and always has been in our programs. So this um, program, as it says here, it provides our groups the flexibility to change their trip. Other that's the destination, their dates, um, changing things around with their itinerary during unforeseen circumstances. If they don't feel confident in their trip. So that is a policy that is provided at no cost, just to make sure that our groups are feeling confident in their program. And that we obviously have utilized a lot in the last two years. And then for each individual family that's choosing to sign their son or daughter up for this trip, we have a few different things. So we have the global travel protection, that's the one sixty-five you see here. And this is your standard insurance option. It is a secondary insurance option. So we have made it an option for families who will be signing up for this because they may have primary insurance that covers their child internationally. So we want them to be able to choose what's right for them. But if they want the option to cancel for any reason, literally for any reason, like someone wants to go to soccer camp instead of the trip or something. Not that that would really be over February break, but you know. They could cancel literally up until twenty-four hours prior to the trip next February. And only lose the cost of the global travel protection plus insurance and the ninety-five dollar deposit. So that is a very um, flexible insurance option that families will all have the opportunity to um, add to their program. If they'd like. And then the other thing that we have risk-free enrollment that you can see bolted at the bottom. Is simply to allow some wiggle room for families. Um, you know, I think that we're looking ahead. Um, as I think Nicole said in the beginning after the, the student video, you know, it's really nice to hear these kids talking about being inspired. There's even a student that mentioned wanting to go to a Spanish-speaking country, um, and just really looking beyond the pandemic. But if families are signing up for this trip in the next um, month or two before April first. If they decide that they change their mind and they want to cancel, they have um, up until this May, May first to do so. And receive every dime back. So it's truly a risk-free enrollment period to give them that flexibility if they change their mind after enrolling. If you have any other questions, have to dive deeper into any of the other slides that we've gone over, but thanks so much.
I think, thank you uh, for you for that presentation. Um, I'll turn it over to the committee to see if they have any questions on what was presented tonight.
Mike, I just have a couple, I guess, comments. First of all, thank you to each of the presenters for, you know, forward-looking to a um, potential. Uh, trip next February. That's great that obviously you're putting the time in and um, thinking about all the options and, and risks and, and other things that are involved. It's great to see that we're looking past the pandemic and hoping that we can begin international travel again. Um, I'm just curious, I, I, it sounds like, you know, partnering with EF, well-known company, I think it's a good idea. Um, obviously, you've done your due diligence and had experience with them firsthand, so that gives me some um, level of comfort. But I'm just curious about who you're, who we're marketing this to. I know it's for grades eleven and twelve, but since we have to begin to market it right now. So it obviously would be for uh, tenth and eleventh grades. Just curious what their profiles look like.
So typically, we offer this to any, anyone can apply um, to be a part of this trip, anybody who will be at the high school next year. Um, we do typically give priority to juniors and seniors, next year's juniors and seniors. Because um, we, we like the idea that we run this every two years so that, um, you know, next year's freshmen and sophomores will ultimately have the opportunity to go again during their high school years. Um, so we typically, um, we do open this up to anybody, but we really encourage students who have a passion for science and conservation. And um, ecotourism and things like that, as well as students who really have a passion for language. Um, that being said, Spanish, um, that being said, it's not, um, like we've had students who take French come on this before and are more in for the science piece. Um, so this doesn't really uh, pigeonhole kids as to you have to be a science student and a Spanish student to come on this. Um, it's really just, you know, are you interested in this? Do you have a passion for one of these two things, maybe both? Um, and then we, as I said, give priority to juniors and seniors, knowing that the younger grades will have an opportunity in a couple of years to do a similar type of trip.
Okay, great. And I know that we always ask this and it's not really, I don't know why I ask it, but what's the roughly the expense or the expected cost of this trip for each student?
Um, so I believe for this trip, we got it just, Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's just under four thousand.
Yes, right now we have um, the hundred dollar enrollment discount on it for any of the students that will sign up in February or March. So the total price is three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. And we have multiple uh, payment plans, so families can sign up and pay bi-weekly at a hundred and sixty-two dollars or monthly for three fifty-five. Per month.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not sure what impact, obviously, you know, it's just a, just, just a curiosity question more than anything. But I think they would, I mean, if we can somehow find a way to send the twenty-two-five kids on this program, it'd be great. But it looks like they'll have almost a year to, I don't know, fundraiser, go up with a way to pay for it.
Yeah, and just one other thing that is um, new since uh, we might have talked last. Is that we also at EF have a global citizen scholarship. So any student that signs up is eligible to apply. It's both need and merit-based, um, either or. And so every single student that signs up for an EF program is eligible to apply for this. We give away a one hundred thousand dollars in scholarship each year, usually to one hundred students. Um, so they would earn one thousand dollars towards their trip. And we also have a donation page for every student that enrolls. So they'll have their own traveler website and um, their own link that they can share with friends, family, the community. So anyone can donate directly to their trip and bring down the price for them personally. So that has been especially helpful during these times.
Okay, thanks. And then one last question is how is, I'm, I'm assuming that EF coordinates all that. And that EF gets some percentage of all the um, travelers. Is that how it works?
Of the donations? No, it's not.
No, of the, of the trip. So EF is sponsoring the trip, but it's, so you're like basically the travel agent, is EF basically the travel agent? And they take care of all the, all the details?
We have our team, um, we have our teams all over the world. We have staff in fifty-four countries. So our team here in Boston and um, in Panama, which is our closest large office to Ecuador. Will be coordinating and planning flights and hotels. All of the activity is coordinating the tour director that Sarah mentioned. Who's from Ecuador that will be traveling with the group. So all of that will be on us to plan. So that Sarah and Charlie can really focus on leading the students on tour and being there to support them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I actually had a question similar to Mr. Gates. So do we think there's gonna be ways for these kids to fundraise over the course of the next year? Try to, you know, help pay for the cost, or are we, are we not looking at any tips of fundraising opportunities for them?
Um, I mean, I think kind of individually, as Maggie said, the students have the opportunity to sort of fundraise on their own. Um, we have never done really an organized fundraiser for these trips in the past. Um, it's certainly something we could explore if we find that we're not, you know, getting the interest that we thought we would or getting the enrollment that we thought we would. Um, however, trying to think when this was, two thousand and fifteen ye- years ago, um, there was a very similar trip planned. And then the Zika virus happened and they ended up having to relocate to Spain. But um, there, that was a fully enrolled trip, so I don't have many doubts that we will um, get the enrollment that we need to get this trip off the ground.
Okay, that's fine. We've heard it, you've heard differences in different groups who do these trips. That's why I was just curious what the fundraising opportunities, but thank you. Is there any other questions from the committee?
I have just one question. Um, and Peter actually asked all the questions I had, cause my concern was, you know, the cost and the ri- the risk to this. The students signing up for this and being able to get any money back if um, if they weren't able to, to go. Um, but I do have a question about um, any like health requirements, like any immune, extra immunizations the kids would have to get to go to Ecuador and the Galapagos.
Um, I, I can take that one. So we do say for immunizations, vaccinations, we um, leave that up to the responsibility of the travelers. And their, their primary care physician to talk through that. Um, I personally went on one of our programs to Ecuador. Granted, that was about seven years ago. And so um, as staff, I, you know, was, I joined a group of students and I personally did not get any immunizations at that time. But I don't know, things are always changing year to year. So it is something that we recommend every traveler talks to their doctor. As they would with any personal trip. And um, we also as a company do try to provide some insight if there are things that we know about or required for each traveler.
Okay, I think, I think you, your thoughts probably went to the most immediate immunization. But I was more thinking like um, maybe like pre-COVID, you know, cause some countries, you know, when you're traveling require. Um, I'm thinking like, I don't know, non-COVID vaccines, you know?
Right, yes. And same thing like, um, you know, if there is, yeah, if there is any medical requirement for an immunization against. Um, like something from a mosquito or, or whatever.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, there is not anything currently required for Ecuador. I could be wrong. I haven't checked that recently. But that's still something that we do recommend the students talk to their primary care physicians about prior to travel, just in case. And then their doctors should be up to date and can look and make sure that they're giving them the correct information as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, seeing other questions from the committee, is there a, a motion on the field trip progress?
I can make a motion to approve the out-of-country field trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands. Uh, in February of twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, so do a roll call vote. Uh, long yes, uh, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Frandolini?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. McCusker?
Yes.
And Miss Flumbon?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Well, I hope to get the students that uh, to fill out this trip. Um, if you can, if there's any changes to the field trip or even if, you know. And when you get back, if there's anything that you can share about how, you know, the students do with it, it'd be great to hear from. But um, thank you for presenting tonight and, you know, good luck preparing for the trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have a um, proposal for non-resident tuition rate adjustment. So I'll turn it over to uh, Dr. Robert.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to share my screen. Alright, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Okay, oops, I go back one, jumped the gun. So I am going to make a proposal that we increase our non-resident tuitions. We currently have uh, five students who are in special education. And they are educated within the Situate substantially separate programs. They live in our neighboring uh, towns like Norwell, Cohassen, and Waymouth. We also have three potential referrals for non-resident students for next year. We currently charge twenty-nine thousand dollars for each student for their core, their base tuition. We charge additional costs for the summer program, which we call ESY, Extended School Year. That's uh, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. And for students in the IXL vocational program, we charge a little bit extra, about eighteen hundred dollars. For job coaching support and um, transportation within the community when they go to their uh, community-based internships. The sending district pays the cost of any one-to-one para-professionals. And we charge them the full amount of whatever that one-to-one para-professional costs, if that's relevant. So if a student comes and they're in a program, but they also have a one-to-one para-professional, we just charge them the actual cost for that para-professional. Okay, the um, the reason I'm asking for an increase is that our costs are more than twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, what I did was I took the cost of the teacher of the program, a para if relevant. Um, I didn't include the therapist unless it was uh, the GEMS program at Jenkins or the social emotional program at Gates. Because they share one counselor just for those kids. Um, but when I looked at the one teacher, one para-professional, um, and then divided by the number of students. This is what I got for actual program costs. So you can see that they range anywhere from thirty-three thousand fifty-two to thirty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-three. And again, this is just for substantially separate programs. So we have the GEMS program at Jenkins. We also have the language-based classroom, the LBC at Jenkins, the TLC, the Learning Center for our students with social emotional challenges. And the language-based classroom at Gates. And then we also have the IXL program at the high school. So um, as I mentioned, they, the costs do not include the one-to-one para-professionals. I also didn't uh, account for cost of therapy, like if they got once or twice a week speech and language therapy. Or occupational therapy, just because the students' IPs are also different. I didn't include any cost of a pro-rating of a general ed teacher salary. If the student was going into an inclusion program, I didn't include the cost of any evaluations that we would be doing or any kind of administrative overhead. Um, the costs are based on this year's salary, so if there is any increases in future years, then um, it would be a higher cost. I looked at some of the, the towns in the general area and created this chart. Uh, basically comparing what they charge for tuition. So you can see that they range anywhere from twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand dollars in Plymouth. To forty-seven thousand three hundred forty dollars in Marshfield. Um, Plymouth did, the special ed director of Plymouth did tell me that they would be also looking at increasing their tuition. Um, so if you take these five districts, um, divide them by five, the average cost uh, for the tuition that they charge is thirty-five thousand. Four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um, so what I wanted to do was to increase the cost, the, I'm sorry, the charge um, for tuition, starting in September to thirty-five thousand dollars. And then phase it in, um, add another one thousand for the following school year. And then um, cap it at thirty-seven thousand dollars for the uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. And I'm also proposing that we raise the summer school tuition to four thousand, slightly up from three thousand eight hundred. That program, uh, ranged, um, depending on the number of students in the program as well as the number of days, but it was basically approximately like three thousand seven hundred to four thousand seven hundred dollars for the cost of the program for the summer. And again, if there is a one-to-one para, we add to that. Um, I believe that, um, we've had the, the charges since at least twenty-eighteen. When I look back over, um, minutes and budgets, um, there wasn't any increase the year before I started. So there wasn't any increase in twenty-nineteen. Um, there may have been an increase in twenty-eighteen. So I think it's fair. I also did not want to make it too competitive with our collaboratives. Um, and this is well below what the collaborative, uh, charges. So I will pause and see if there's any questions.
Any questions from the other members of the committee?
Um, yeah, Mike, I have, it's a couple, I guess, comments. First of all, I'm, um, Michelle, I'm very surprised that a lot of our South Shore neighbors don't offer, uh, just our non-resident tuitions. I was not aware of that. That's interesting. Do you have any, can you comment on that at all?
Sure, I think, um, because they send some of the students to us, like Norwell, Cohasset, Hingham doesn't, um, they, you know, do that. I think, you know, it, it makes sense. We don't want to build a program for other districts, but if we have spaces, it makes sense to bring the kids in and helps to pray our costs. So, uh, you know, I, I think that, that might be why I, we did speak with Abington and they said they haven't done this yet, but if there was interest that they would do it and they would charge what the, uh, collaborative would charge. I, I think that with relatively small districts, it's hard to create enough programs for every single like grade level and every single student profile. Um, and so that's why we have collaboratives because they have the amount of students that makes it cost-effective and appropriate. Because we don't want to have like a program of one student. And, um, it's just, you know, kind of grandfathered in here where we've had a fair amount of students that have come into the IXL. Um, we have one student this year that's in the GEMS program.
Yeah, no, I think you bring up a, um, an important piece there, your reference to the collaborator. I think that we are competition or they're a competition of ours and I mean, from a pricing perspective, we do want to come in cheaper than to, to make it more attractive for those sending districts.
Right, I, I do have those numbers if you want. Their, uh, school year tuitions range from forty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-nine to sixty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-nine. And their summer program is, um, approximately seven thousand to eight thousand. So we're well under that.
Yeah, and the majority of our, these students are in the IXL program. So what's that, grade nine through age twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't, I, as you said, we, I think we did vote to increase it probably in like two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. I don't remember exactly what that increase was, but I know we did increase it. I think we were at like twenty-four thousand or twenty-five thousand back then. I mean, I, obviously, I think that we kind of want to find that pricing where we don't want to turn away any, any potential interested districts. Um, and say, hey, we can just send our, our child to the collaborative. So if we're showing a ten thousand dollar savings, I think that it's reasonable. Those are my, those are my thoughts.
And sometimes we, uh, sometimes we have students, I'm sorry, that are in the program and then they move. And so, um, I was talking to a specialized director in a different town about that today and said, well, you know, this is what we're we're charging now. It might be more. So sometimes that's a reason also that they would want them to stay as opposed to then go to a new school in the new district.
Meaning they live in situ and then move to another district?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Peter. I think it's, uh, your job is really tough. I mean, it's like hard to predict the future. Who needs what? People moving in, people moving out. Other, you know, places cost going up, competitiveness in that way, who's in the programs. You know, I think my only question is like, the pricing that you, this is the pricing you feel comfortable with? Is it too low? I mean, considering it still seems like a big difference between what the collaborators are charging. Is it, are you being kind of conservative for just to be super competitive or should we be kind of even jumping in more?
Well, I'm trying to not overcharge, just really basically to recoup what it costs us.
Which is totally fair and, you know, parents appreciate and other districts, um, more than anybody. So, okay, um, I had another question and it jumped out of my head. Oh, I, it was more of a comment, actually. I like that you did the incremental sort of not just, um, you know, giant leaps, just kind of like the phasing in is kind of obviously such a nice, um, you know, a nice approach to any of these. Anytime there's a cost increase, it's nice to kind of stretch that out and phase it in.
Thank you.
I did have one question. When you get, when the district receives a referral, um, does the sending, potential sending district ask what our tuition is, what our rates are? I'm assuming that they do, but I'm curious what kind of impact it actually has.
I think the, I don't, I don't, no, I don't, honestly, I think most of them have already sent someone. No one's really asked, to be honest. Like this other, um, specialized director, you know, I, I told her what the, what the cost was and it didn't seem to be an issue. Again, if it's either going to be, you know, there's a reason why often they're, they're asking us if we have a spot because they don't have a program. So it would either be us or the collaborative or, you know, some other kind of creative, um, programming. And so we're kind of like, you know, a least restrictive, um, option. And our, our programs are good. You know, the IXL program's been here for a while. The GEMS program's really good. The language-based classrooms are, are, um, doing very well. So I think the reputation is out there too.
Okay, great. No, I, I think it sounds reasonable. Again, I think as, as you alluded to, we just don't want to, we don't want to lose students to potentially to collaborative by overpricing our services. And it seemed, I mean, based on what you provided, it seems very reasonable.
Yeah, and based on the feedback that you provided and the answers so far, I'm, I'm glad it sounds like there'll be a minimal impact on those students. We wouldn't start seeing other towns saying, well, you know what, we're going to go somewhere else. So we're going to try to, you know, find a cheaper option. So I'm glad we're looking to recoup and cover any costs that we have, but not necessarily, you know, price ourselves out of in a potentially negatively impacting these students. The only, only question I had for you was, so you said we charge for the one-for-one para. Is there a reason we don't charge for any of the other, I think you're like the, um, the therapist or some of the other, um, positions in your PowerPoint. Is there any reason we don't try to charge for any of those?
Um, I think that because the I P can be very fluid and then it just becomes kind of like, all right, they're getting a half an hour speech and language and, you know, and then it goes to an hour and then it's just, just becomes an accounting issue. It's, um, if someone had like five times a week speech and language, something that would be a really high amount, that might be one issue, but a lot of times the students might be in a group too. So the therapist is already doing the treatment and so to add another student doesn't really cost us that much. And I, I think it would just be, you know, some of the collaboratives do add on charges, like if they don't have a physical therapist, then they charge us extra for that. I just think that, um, with the students that we have, it just, I don't think it's, would be that drastic of a, of a change to make it worthwhile to just kind of keep counting.
Okay, no, that makes sense. You don't want to sit there nickel and dime of the other district to take over that. I just wasn't sure if it was, you know, similar to the para, if it was a one-to-one and we were bringing someone in just for that one student, but that, that makes sense.
If we, if we did have to bring someone in for just that student, then we would have to have a conversation for that. But the one-to-one para is directly for that student. So that, to me, that makes, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with it. It makes a lot of sense.
Mike, I was, so we're just, we can't vote this today. We vote at the next meeting. I'll just comment, I know that he is on top of it, but Dr. Dutch, if we do approve this, that will go into our budget, correct, as a increase in revenue from non-resident tuitions?
When you see the budget presentation, there is an assumption that we are, uh, increasing that. So you see it in there at this point in time as revenue.
Right, I knew you were on it.
Yeah, but Peter, you're right. That was actually my next point. We'll, um, we'll vote this on our next regular school committee meeting, which is, uh, the twentieth. Thank you, Dr. Bobert, for, for presenting that tonight.
Thank you very much.
That's moving on. Next in the agenda is our leadership report. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perkett for his state of the district presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gates, and good evening, everyone. Just going to try to share my screen here.
I'm not the chairman anymore.
Oh, did I say Gates?
You did, yeah. Thank you for that, though.
You're about eight months late on that one, Phil.
Mr. Long, that's the best compliment you got all day, I think. That's when, it's similar to the first three months when Chairman Gates backed last year, called me, um, Mr. Griffin.
You don't have to say that, thank you.
So, uh, thank you all tonight. Um, I'm here to present, present something, uh, new and exciting, I hope, for everyone. Uh, titled State of the, uh, District or City of Public Schools, uh, State of the District. This is a collaborative process from all of the stakeholders, um, specifically leadership, from all our schools and our leadership teams and our central office teams. So a lot of people, um, obviously contributed, our teachers and, and employees in the, in the workforce. So this is a central office, kind of a mid-year view of what's happening in our district to celebrate those things that are happening, to, um, highlight some of the things that we pride ourselves on, which is transparency, uh, and equity. Uh, also to highlight the two pillars and our, um, work that is highly focused on those. Establishing a culture of collaboration, uh, with all our stakeholders and also, um, you know, focusing on academic and personal excellence. A lot of times we spend in the meetings talking about COVID. I'm going to put that aside tonight and just understand that we can do both. That all of this that I'm going to share tonight is being accomplished. Um, and I think the theme of tonight, as we've seen, is to, you know, to return to normal and what things look like. So we'll share this out tonight and then afterwards, if you have any questions, I've asked all the leadership team to be present. So if there's someone that can answer it more specifically than me, I'll defer some of those questions if necessary at the time. And hope you enjoy it. I also will say that, um, you'll notice this is a district perspective. And what we'd like to do, uh, again, as a new tradition, um, is follow up with, um, school-based state of the schools uh, in subsequent meetings where our principals will do something similar. And it'll be more focused, uh, in line with our goals and pillars, but also, um, more school-specific. So some of these things you'll, you'll see today, we'll have a through line, uh, in those presentations. You'll see some similarities, but you'll see some more specifics at the school level. All right, the opening, um, document here just talks a little bit about, you know, our relentless pursuit of becoming the best district in the world. You know, we, we kind of identify that as perfection, something you never reach, but you always strive for and always kind of work towards being better. I, I believe personally, you get better every day or worse. You never quite stay the same. That's all conscious decisions. So we're always working on moving forward with what we do, and I think we've had a lot of good success with that. The home away from home feel, um, you know, it, it's really working out. We really believe in that. And we want to be accountable for that, that we want to make our school district a place where people want to be, feel comfortable and safe and excited to learn. So again, a work in progress is something we spent a lot of time on. Another word that jumps out in the opening phrase here is communication. Again, we pride ourselves, and I'll have a slide on that tonight, talking about the different ways that we've, uh, attempted to communicate and how we believe in the transparency with our community. And finally, just a foundation, this, a lot of this, you'll see some, um, foundational opportunities that we've started or in progress. And I'll end slides tonight with a little flavor of what we're looking forward to, um, finishing up the second half of the year and beyond as we move our district from good to great. So the whole child is obviously something we are very committed to um, in removing the barriers for academic growth and achievement for all students. And these are cultures. These are not built overnight. These take time. And nurturing, and that's something that you'll see tonight. These are, these are systems and programs that we're implementing. Ultimately, it's about the people that are doing the work. Um, and so I think we've got some great people here and we continue to be, build strong teams. So you've got collaboration, personalization and personal excellence are the three tenants of our two pillars. Uh, you notice how I put, uh, we have symbols here over those. You'll notice those symbols. We put anytime that typical, uh, excuse me, that specific pillar is, um, mentioned or connected. So if there's something to do with collaboration, it'll have that, um, arrow type of insignia. If it's personalization, it will have the heart. And then personal excellence will have the, um, arrow there. That'll include academic and personal excellence. Sometimes they have two, sometimes they have all three. So a lot of these things that we're doing, um, kind of interconnected between the three. Those symbols help us understand that through this presentation. So here are some highlights that have kind of put the topics into. So we'll talk about professional development, extremely important to having, um, high-achieving staff and, uh, reflective of, um, high level of student learning and engagement in our classrooms. There's a direct correlation there, we believe. Curriculum acceleration, we spent a lot of time on our curriculum this year and our systems in implementation of and commitment to curriculum. We'll talk about that. Sustainable systems. So in a district, um, there's a lot of systems that we have to look at and that we've assessed and our, you know, our team is fairly new within two years old, uh, younger than two years old, but we've made a lot of commitment and time to, uh, address systems and to be more efficient, to be more productive. Um, so you'll see some of that tonight. As we approach, uh, budget season, finance is hugely important. I believe it's a reflection of your values. So you'll see what we've committed to in our finance section and also human resources. Uh, spoken about the importance of the people that are in front of our students, those that work in our schools. And then finally ending with some future big-ticket items that we're looking at as we approach the second half of the school year and beyond. So first, I'm going to start with professional development. Again, tonight, uh, there'll be highlights. There's a lot more going on and we're always willing to speak with folks about details of any of these topics, uh, that we bring up tonight. You know, the first one is, um, three hours of asynchronous. Asynchronous is a type of learning that, um, can happen anywhere. It's not in the four walls of a classroom. An example of that might be, um, you know, online virtual classes or, um, hybrid type of classes that we've all kind of, um, experienced. And our teachers this year had to, um, lead, um, three hours of asynchronous professional development. And it was really great that a, a PD committee, committee involved of, um, wide diverse group of, of educators got together and worked with, um, different groups to come up with something that, uh, teachers could access and a variety of options. I think that's really important to have a menu. A lot of what you see in professional development in, in school districts is top-down, uh, one-size-fits-all. We're very proud of the fact that we've moved away from that and we provide a menu of options. I'll share with you, uh, in the upcoming slide about, um, how we get feedback to know what our teachers need and want. As well as to align it to what our goals are for the district. So we'll talk about that. The S C I endorsement, um, is important because, um, you know, this is one of our goals to, to, for teacher excellence. Uh, this is a course that, um, helps when you work with our students of the English language learners. It's mandated by the state. If you have an English learner, uh, language learner in your classroom, we're trying to raise the bar. We're all teachers, get it, get it no matter what. And we're doing that through our contact with our, uh, Bridgewater State University. I'll mention those, uh, partnerships later. You saw M P Y, um, Best Partnership for Youth in the previous, um, column. These will be mentioned later too, but these are our partners making these things happen at a, at a big scale for our staff. I'm proud to report that this class was, uh, filled with our, our staff, uh, volunteering to do it. We've got an extremely, uh, discounted rate that saved the district money, um, because of our partnership with B S U. And we were able to have a sole class dedicated to our district. So what a great work happening there. And then how does this all happen? We have a PD committee. You'll see through some of these things, you'll see teams and committees. Uh, these are some of the things that are, You'll see through some of these things, you'll see teams and committees. Uh, these are some of the things that are, um, organizationally that we've adjusted. But also it's collaborative where we've included a number of people so that things are done, um, in, um, kind of, uh, looked at and assessed through a group of, of different people. And each committee has different leaders of that committee, so it's not central office making all the decisions. It's a group of, uh, educators that are buying in, invested into leading these types of committees to come up with ideas like three hours asynchronous and the SCI endorsement. So that PD committee, uh, these ideas are funneled through that group. Those group kind of look at these things and come up with these ideas and work with our partners to, um, make these menus possible and these things that were never possible in our district are now possible for our teachers. So again, a lot of things I'll be sharing tonight are new to the district, including these three. So here's a good example. A lot of what we talk about is in collaboration is, uh, invoice. And this is an example of educator voice and their professional learning. And if you start at the top and work your way down the funnel, um, after every professional, professional learning experience, again, this is also transparency. Um, we give a survey to our staff that took professional learning or professional development. And they grade it. We do a letter grade and then we do, um, a bunch of other feedback anonymously. And so it's, it's broken down by which professional learning practice they went to, uh, what school they're at. So we can look at that, uh, next with the PD committee. So that follows down to them. They have all the feedback and say, okay, you know, how did that last experience go for our, our staff? How did they feel it went? And that gives us an opportunity to reflect on, uh, what professional opportunities we're providing our staff. If they were successful, why? Uh, if they were good, how can they improve? And if they were not so good, why? And how can we learn from that to, um, make sure that doesn't happen again? And so we're always, this allows us to continually, um, communicate and improve and collaborate. Also because educators are voice, uh, because we, uh, also share that feedback, uh, the principals do what their faculties means with the staff. So the staff all know, it's no secret. Okay, this one was really great. This one was kind of a flop or this one was in the middle. Um, so again, it's back to that transparency. It's with our community. It's with our teachers. Uh, it's the only way we believe you get better is by having honest conversations. Um, so now the PD committee, um, assesses that feedback and looks for trends and then sends it off to our, our central office leadership team, then can make ideas on future, uh, changes or implementations in professional go, development plans. And then the district leadership team, um, which is a larger group of, uh, our leadership, then takes that feedback and comes up with recommendations, um, to the PD committee for our next BD based on all that data. So and then it starts all over again. So, um, pretty, again, this didn't, uh, happen until this year. You know, Ms. Triscoll and the department chairs and principals have been working hard on this. So kudos to them. It's really working well. And, and the teachers from what we see in our feedback really feel appreciative that they are being heard. And we're appreciative that they're being honest with us and that our professional learning opportunities have been enhanced dramatically by doing so. So curriculum acceleration, and I like how we call it curriculum acceleration. How do we, uh, make our curriculum strong? Uh, and, um, aligned with the state standards, but also, uh, meeting the students where they're at and challenge them in rigorous, is the word I know we hear a lot. But we really want it to be a strong, uh, viable curriculum. So here's some documentation that we need to, to clean up and fix that we've identified. And the hard work of the, again, here's another committee. And it's not a big committee. It's a smaller committee, but it's representative committee and it's different people, different leaders in the, in the district again. And empowered to make decisions. These, uh, committees were voluntary, so people could, could pick which committee they would be on. And, um, so they're passionate about these things, so that we found is very good. So this, some of the things on the plate of the acceleration committee is working with our department chairs. Make sure our documentation, um, is all in one location. You know, I know that was a, a, a big concern from the community members, families, school community members when I was interviewed, let through last year and into this year. Um, and in fairness to everybody, we have the curriculum. It just seems to be all in different places. And what we're trying to do here is put it under, uh, one location, easily accessible, vetted, and then shared so that there's, um, you know, there's no question about what we're teaching. Um, how it's connected to the standards and accessibility to everybody. So that's in process. And, um, in February and then the next bullet, um, we're moving towards looking at the units, um, and digging deeper into that. So that's, that's a time-consuming, um, process, but a very important one. It's something we committed to last year. Um, as we focus on our curriculum work this year. And then a pretty exciting opportunity for us is looking into a new ELA and reading program, uh, for the elementary schools. Um, and we're a big believer in piloting things, you know, uh, programs are great. Yeah, they do a lot of things. They calibrate. They look for consistency. Finding the best one for us is important. Um, but ultimately, the people have to implement those programs. So it's important that we do a pilot and that we hear from our teachers. Um, I'll get into a little more, more detail about how we're gonna roll this out this year. But again, really excited to have that. And we'll say, I don't think there's been a reading program at the elementary level and by maybe ten years here, nobody seems to remember when the last one was. That's a real problem. Um, so something we are addressing right away. Um, also, this complements our foundations, which we started recently. It complements that, uh, the key to level. So we're really looking, as we know, literally extremely important to our elementary kiddos, uh, combined with the COVID. Broughtbacks that we've seen. Um, and so this is vitally important to us and something we're working on right now. So calibration, how do we calibrate? A big, um, commitment to us is consistency. If your child's in the fourth grade at Hattie Lee, um, and, uh, someone else has a, a child in the fourth grade at Cushing. Um, they should be receiving the same education. Different teachers, different styles, certainly. They should be getting the same education. That doesn't always happen. It's extremely hard to do, and this is what we mean by calibration. How do we do this? So that the, each child is getting the same high-level education and then that our teachers are getting trained and prepared and have the supplies they need. Uh, and supports they need to carry that up. So again, that's the calibration piece we're working on. Um, the, the, uh, district committed to Eureka Math recently and Foundation Phonics. So these are uh, resources we haven't used that are commonly used across all the elementaries. Uh, we're continuing to get feedback in working to improve those as we grow in use of those and continue our professional learning and development with those. Um, and then our curriculum acceleration committee, I thought was, um, you know, a really strong point. Wanted to get together and have consistent focus. So what are we looking for in a great lesson and a great curriculum? And these are some things they come up with. So when we roll these out, one thing you need to do is have a foundation on what you expect to be taught in the classrooms. And these are some ideas, um, are they state of college board standards? Are they connected to the standards? Other essential questions. Um, academic language and skills, um, sample assessment evidence and required an optional resources, including text. So we want to make sure that, in that fourth grade example, that the same text is being used from school to school. Um, in grade, in the same grades as well. All the fourth grade teachers should be using the same text and, and resources. So that consistency is really important to us. So that's some of the calibration that's happening, and it will certainly happen as we document more of the curriculum on the other side of the, uh, column here. So here's some really exciting things happening in high school. I wanna, um, you know, celebrate the work that, uh, Dr. McGuire and Mr. Luette, Miss Hughes and department chairs and staff have been doing, and of course, the kids just for really stepping up and making these things happen. Um, so just some data that we've come up with from last year, this year, and, uh, we'll continue to collect more and more as we, as we move on with this. But our commitment was, uh, when I shared a while back about what academic excellence and define that. You know, we wanted to have more challenging courses and we wanted to, um, remove some barriers for kids to be able to do that. And that ties in with equity as well. Want the kids to be able to take high-level courses. We wanted to add more high-level courses for opportunities. And we're doing both, I think, right now successfully. And so some examples here is we, in, in our, we didn't even put in this right now, but our, uh, enrollment was down this year and our numbers are still up for the, uh, number of kids taking AP from two fifty-six last year to two ninety-nine this year. Uh, and we're looking to continue to increase that. It's a good number. Um, something else that's happening in high school is the AP kickoff. Um, looking to celebrate high achievement and kids challenging themselves to take AP courses. Uh, so there'll be a parents' evening on March first, I believe, and they, on March fourth, there'll be, uh, students, a section that they sign up for those classes to, uh, introduction and celebration, um, you know, of being part of something, you know, at a high level. So those are some, there's some fun things that we, we should celebrate these things. So, um, looking forward to that and giving, um, I'm sure Dr. McGuire will give some feedback in her newsletter and possibly come on to these types of meetings to give feedback on how the kickoff goes. And again, uh, hard work by our team, uh, high school to acquire an expansion grant from, through AP STEM. Um, twenty-one students were able to take AP computer science, principals and AP environmental science. I think I heard one or both of these courses mentioned by our students in the report today, so that's paying off. The good news is we just got our program of studies approved, as you recall, recently. And, uh, true to our commitment to high school as offering, is offering more advanced level courses, including three new AP courses. These two here, computer science, principles, environmental science and, um, human geography. So those will be happening. On the right side here, we talk about, um, some secondary pathways. Um, and increased applications for early college and early decision. Um, so a, a big jump there from students applying to colleges and again, with less kids in the buildings, um, jumped up to eighty-four percent this year. And total applications, um, also jumped considerably from twenty-three thirty to twenty-nine seventy-two. Uh, which is good information and a trend we hope to continue. Um, and then a really exciting thing that's underway here that I wanted to kind of share a small, um, uh, graphic with you tonight about, and then I'm sure Dr. McGuire will be sharing a lot more detail on this when, um, she does her address, uh, state of, of the high school. But this is something I know the high school team has been working on. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to, uh, link. Um, post-secondary college and careers to our coursework or, um, and opportunities, including things like, uh, internships and capstone projects. Something new and exciting. So these things, um, kids could sign up for these. It's not mandatory. Kids could sign up for a track if they're really interested in business and I want to go to Bentley and study business. Well, you know, studying ninth grade, I could start taking courses in the academic business track. At graduation, you get a seal for that. It's on your transcript, which is how, helps in the very competitive college, um, marketplace. Um, so if you're interested in global studies, that will include, uh, maybe something similar to the trip we saw tonight. It would be, uh, include taking courses in that. Um, uh, world language most likely and things like that. So, uh, health and human service, environmental stewardship and engineering. So it's a, a huge catch-all. Again, the plan, without going into too much more detail and then working on this and visiting schools and making sure, uh, this is done well, is to pilot this next year with some students. Uh, work things out and then, uh, make it official in, in the following year, twenty-three, uh, of the fall of twenty-three. So some cool things happening with, um, the secondary level. Now we get into sustainable systems. Evaluation cycle obviously is, is very important to us, giving feedback to our staff. Um, and this year, we're excited to bring onboard a new, uh, evaluation tool called Evaluation Plus. Um, some of this technology um, was, uh, a lot, has allowed us actually to, to make life easier and how we document evaluations, how teachers implement. Uh, or import their goals as administrators as well. It's a warehouse where we have access, uh, in user-friendly terms to, um, the goal-setting process and the evaluation process. So, um, you know, just a simple change in software, proper training for our staff. Using our staff and department chairs to do, conduct the training, uh, in our principals was hugely helpful. Um, so I want to thank them for that. Again, we're, the collaboration where we're involving everybody is hugely helpful and it empowers people to stay involved and they want to be part of something really special. So I think that's helped the evaluation cycle. Um, it's a system with a central location that we all understand. In the last couple of years, we've had, again, we, we had an old system that wasn't very user-friendly. And, uh, last year we had to use, you know, Google Docs and some other things, um, which were fine, but they weren't this. So switching to this has made life a lot easier. What I didn't put on here is just celebrating another team that we have, another committee. It's the evaluation team. Uh, it is department shares on there, administrators, and we did a, um, we're, they work closely together this year to take like a thirty-page, um, evaluation DESI document, which is, uh, kind of marten red tape and kind of counterproductive in a lot of ways to the evaluation process. Not very user-friendly to give them feedback, uh, managing goals, aligning goals to the district goals. Um, so that group kind of revised that and collaboratively worked on that. It passed muster with our staff, our administrators, myself. And that teamwork has been very good in allowing us to use a evaluation system that's very, um, productive. So that's the evaluation piece and feedback in, in goal-setting and achievement of goals is all very important. And that all falls on the evaluation cycle. As far as the curriculum revision. We've talked about the new re, reading in the LA program. Um, so basically what happens here is that a group of, uh, leaders in our district have been looking at, uh, DESI-vetted programs. So we make sure that, um, you know, they're, you know, research-based and have been proven to be successful. And then we're going to try to implement, uh, or test out three of them through that pilot. So that'll be done, um, this year soon with, uh, our elementary teachers. They'll be piloting this, them along with our literacy specialist, special education teachers and principals will offer us feedback on each of the, uh, programs. And then we're gonna invite the students and families to offer feedback, um, and share the programs with them. So I think that's a real smart way before purchasing a program, jumping into it. We want the people who have boots in the ground to give us the feedback. This isn't a top-down central office purchase. This has been vetted, piloted. Um, the curriculums have all been vetted. They're DESI-approved. So we're really excited about that. And then we're going to parent, parent contrast by the end of the year, get feedback from those constituents. And then make a decision and an investment in a new reading program that's sorely, uh, needed here and has been lacked for several years. So again, that's a really exciting news and I wanted to share the process with you all to, uh, give you solace that it's being done properly. If you have any questions on that, you can certainly call me or, or, uh, Ms. Triscoll. And then the next one is the technology audit. Um, you know, as, the more and more we use technology, the more important it is that we understand, um, what we have in our district, where our limitations are and that it's safe. You know, we've had incidents in the past where, um, there's been use of technology for, for not educational and learning experiences. And we wanted to make sure that the families and students and staff know that they're safe using the technology. So one major commitment is a one-to-one roll-up. And what that means is that we'd like every student in our district to have a school-issued, uh, Chromebook. And by doing so, um, it levels the playing field. Quite honestly, it's equitable. We talk about equity all the time. Um, by bring your own, we have some students with, um, you know, really high-end computers and some that don't have them at all that we have to loan to. So this equals a playing field. It gives them a very, uh, there's no cost to it. So it saves families a lot of money. Um, it allows us to use, um, district computers. Um, and collect them before the students leave. And so it's, obviously, if anyone's researched this, it's a, it's a sustainable program. Uh, we'll be sharing that actually with the school committee, uh, Mr. Long. Um, our tech director will be sharing the details of that with our, with our school committee and then with our community. Um, I think in the March meeting. So we'll, people have more information on how we're rolling that out. And with our plan is, when our five-year replacement plan is and all of that. So details to follow. But I want to get back to the technology audit. We had an outside, uh, highly regarded group come in and just audit our technology soup to nuts. Um, our, you know, our systems, our processes, our equipment. And they gave us a very comprehensive, um, list of priorities to address. And so we're chipping away at those now. Um, so it was, oh, well worth the time and effort to do that. Um, we also found some things. You know, for example, even your Wi-Fi, somewhere, if some stranger comes into the building, can they just? You know, for example, even your wifi, someone, if some stranger comes into the building, can they just wa- log on to your wifi? Without a password, things like that. So those are safety things to us or can someone? Who has access to secure files, uh, things like that. So. Our tech team does a wonderful job. This was just one more layer for them to um. Identify areas from an outside set of eyes. To look at things. We wanted to make sure that everyone's safe, secure, and we're running our technology program efficiently. What falls into that also is our uh, website redesign. We're very excited about this. Um, you know, our website. Has been improving for the last couple of years. But our contract runs up with this design company and quite honestly, I think we could do better uh, to, to get one that's more user-friendly. Um, and one that has um. What folks need and want. A touch of a finger. So we want to make that the hub of our district. Again, we're moving that way now. But we've got a kid, a committee right now, working together to look at what platforms we want to use to make our website. High-powered, user-friendly and um. One of the best in the state. So that committee is working. The anticipated goal is to uh, roll that out next fall. We'll be working through the spring and into the summer with um. Outside support on that to have a new web is uh. A new website for next year. So again, some exciting things happening in technology. Next is obviously something very important. To us. Um, especially during a pandemic. But it goes back to that whole child. And that the academic and personal excellence is extremely important. Um. In that personal excellent, excellences, we have, we want to make sure that our, our students are um. Are healthy, emotional in our staff. So. We've really committed. This is something the, the peer. The peer uh, relationship with the partnerships in education in resilience has been in the district. Kudos to uh, Mr. Aniri, who's kind of a one-man show. Really, he presents every year on it. There's a lot of work, good work with that. Uh, what we decided this year is we wanted to get him some help and spread the work. That's systemically our, our idea that one person doing all that work wasn't the most efficient or best way to get that. Uh, information out to folks, but also to make sure it's finding its way into our classrooms to support our kids. And so. We expanded what was called the holistic student assessment. To fourth grade. Passed it had been five through ten. So we brought it down to the fourth grade this year. It was taken recently. We're currently, and what that is, it's a student self-report. That helps us understand where the student's coming from. On a set of topics that include active engagement. Assertiveness, a sense of belonging and reflection. So um, a lot of great data is collected from that. What each school now has done is create their own social, emotional development team. And we have also a district SED team where each member of that school-based team is now a member of the central uh, district team. And so that. All the information is. Shared so that not one school is doing it differently than others. People are sharing the same type of data. They're using the peer assessment. And they're sharing ideas. Um, they're also, the principals have done a really good job to committing to their teams to look at the data. What are the kids saying? What are our deficiencies and strengths, areas of growth? And then going back and using time uh, during faculty meetings. To have the staff uh, exit, uh, give access to the staff of that information. And then the staff work collaboratively together to come up with solutions. To identify trends where we need to be more supportive of our students. And then these all go down to the individual basis too. These. Uh, identifying individual students that may need specific supports, getting the counselors involved, parents, obviously, any types of meetings, we can use this data. So a real commitment, a real change, even from last year on. How much we're using this data and how many people are involved in it and how coordinated it is. So we're really proud of it. Um, and again, that's ongoing right now. So we have that information. It's been very helpful. So I want to thank uh, all those involved in that work. So that's. You know, some districts may say, okay, we want to hire more. Counselors. And you know, we don't believe that's the answer. We believe that all hands-on-deck approach to a well-being of our kids and to each other as adults. Is the best way to do it. So now, as you can see through this process and developing teams and coordinating those teams' connections with, with a centrally-located district team. All our ideas will be consistent and widespread. Next, we have our lit teams, love, inclusion and trust. I know Mr. Adams has done a great deal of work, but again, he's spreading the wealth here. Uh, and I'll use a phrase of his that I love. It's we, not me. So it's not just Mr. Adams. It's, it's branched out to our loving inclusion and trust, and trust teams. Um, these are at each school, uh, similar to our social. Emotional development teams. You know, love is contagious. It's, it's good. Inclusion is good, trust is good. So those are the things that. You know, these teams look at, again, it's their students involved. There's teachers on these teams. And then there's a district team that kind of calibrates the information from the schools. To look at some things that we can do, to look at our pledge. Um, and I'll give you an example that I thought was pretty cool that. All the, the, the lit teams come up with through the, the district team was um, looking at our food services. Coming up with uh, different cuisines that are reflective of the students in our schools. And their heritage and backgrounds. Dave Stevens and his team doing great work with uh, our lit teams to make that happen. So your, your kids will likely be coming home saying, oh, I tried something new today. Different country or, you know, so really cool stuff. And that's just one simple example of um. People working together and, and ideas coming from the ground up. Um, into including everybody and having fun doing so. So. We'll keep you updated on those. I'm sure it, uh, Mr. Adams' next report out, he'll even have some more highlights there. So the next topic is community outreach. You know, we're really working hard. To communicate with our community, to get feedback, to listen, to learn and to improve. Seaside chats has been something that I started this year. The first one was on the MSBA. Project and I learned a lot from our community members. We had parents there. We had um. Teachers there. We had community members there. And it was a good mix of stakeholders to come in and talk about that. The next one's coming up and that'll be more of an open forum, just to kind of listen and learn. Uh, as I get to know folks in the district. Um, these were personally done. It's going to be purposely done uh, to be in person. And I know um. Some feedback I've gotten is that, you know, these meetings are, are remote and we can get more people at home. I understand that. I think future meetings may go that way. But I've also got a lot of feedback that, you know, I haven't met a lot of people in person. And I think it's, it's important that I do that. This is that one opportunity for now to do that on Seaside Chat. And the next one is expanded CPAC. And this is pretty amazing. This is our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Uh, that Dr. uh, Boebert oversees. And I remember her coming to me last year when she started and saying, you know, we've got one really dedicated, committed person that comes to these meetings. She's the chair and that's me and her. So um, you know, this is hugely important to um. Our social, uh, our special education program is, is parental involvement. So by law, we have to have this, but we want it to be awesome. We want parents to be there. We want to. Hear your ideas. We want to share what we're doing. And we want to collaborate. And Dr. Dr. Um, Over has made this, you know, a, a real commitment of hers and it's really been successful. Uh, the last meeting had uh, last year. Obviously during COVID, it was tough. We, we upped the numbers from one person over several years to eight. And this year, she's, she got twenty-three people at the last meeting. She's got actually co-chairs, a marketing person. And a secretary. Uh, in fact, they did a training uh, for the group on dyslexia last meeting. You know, with twenty-three uh, parents showing up. So. Kudos, uh, Dr. Boebert and to our parents for committing to that. And it's open to everybody. Welcome, join us. But that's really um. A success that's happening right now with our community outreach and our collaboration. Uh, I know. Um, our new AD. Mr. Payne has done a lot of work with our captains council and athletics um, to teach leaders how to lead. Uh, sometimes we just assume kids know what they're doing. I know our coaches do some work with that. I know this is a commitment by Mr. Payne who has a wealth of knowledge and leadership in athletics and in leadership. So working with our captains to reinforce that is hugely important and, and a job well done. You notice this year, we, we moved from open houses to expectation nights. Uh, you might have noticed also that we shared uh, you know, state um. Expectations or aligned with DESI on the standards or expectations for each grade level. Uh, something new for our staff. I want to commend them for doing that. It was a leap of faith for them. But again, it's us being consistent, us aligning to high expectations. And we want that night to mean something for the parents. We also got a lot of good feedback from the, from the parents and the kids and how those night, nights went. Uh, what we shared and we're looking to continue to even improve those. But the goal of that is that it's, we want to share what our expectations of. Um, our students are and of us. We also want to share from the families and parents and students, what your expectations of us are. First stop PD, um, again, this could have been the PD for our staff. This is run by Jamil Adams and it's um, opportunities for our staff voluntarily. To go after school and learn a variety of strategies. The more, the first one I believe was on having difficult conversations. The turnouts have been great. Again, Jamil uh, or Mr. Adams uses uh, the feedback. Formula that we use for all PD. We've gotten really positive uh, feedback for that. I know I shared some with the committee. And again, for, and, and just to thank Mr. Adams for the great work, but also to our staff that. You know, after a hard day's work, go commit to a voluntary PD to get better on top of the other PD we offer, shows us that you're committed. Uh, it also shows us um, that. We're listening to what you want to learn and continue to learn. So. Having optional PD on top of, of mandated PD is something we're doing here. What's something that great districts do. So that's something I wanted to share. BOY stands for beginning of year, welcome calls. Again, that two-way communication we're working on, uh, reaching out proactively to all families. To let you know, we care about your child. We're here for you and your family. And we're home. We're a home away from home here. Uh, I know some schools are actually continuing that throughout the year. We're, you know, our goal is to, is next year is to do that. And then kind of every year. Make that a year-long thing. I know, I know Gates is doing postcards right now and almost a hundred percent of parents have been outreach. So. Great things and that's all contagious. The feedback we get from that is, has been tremendous. It's appreciated by parents. It's appreciated by our teachers. So uh, thank you for the hard work and from our administrators and staff for doing that, making that commitment. Cause it's working. The Thursday thoughts, um, it's, it's our commitment. We decided to go to and every other week, try to have more information. Uh, for you. We hope you enjoy that. We included links. We will look at the data. We look at the pages that are visited. We look how long people stay on there. Um, so that data helps us and informs our decisions to have themes. We've moved to themes each um. Each Thursday thoughts. So you've probably noticed that. So the next one coming up is on the budget, for example. So uh, I want to thank um. Emily Matthews and uh. And computers are, are kind of our editors and they do a really lot of work in making sure that that information that the community gets is accurate. It's based on a theme that we want to commit to and it aligns to our goals and pillars. That's all very purposeful. Uh, and it's based on feedback that um, we get from. The amount of people that view that, what they view and how long they view it for. And so feedback is good there. Principals are also committing to newsletters. Those are wonderful. They're, you know, parents want to see what's happening at their, at the district, but they're also very in, in work. Concerned about what's happening in their child's school. So we're committed to principals newsletters, which again, feedback is great um, for that. We're, we're looking at that. The last couple of things have come out of the lit uh, teams, the lit line, uh, little plug here for our lit line. If you want to copy that number down. It's just a, a message of love, inclusion and or trust. Um, sometimes there's guests um. Speakers on there. Uh, if you're interested, contact Mr. Adams and um. Certainly sure you could be a volunteer on there. But that's when you're having a good or tough day. I'll call that. It just always makes me feel better. So please try it. It's fun. It's enjoyable and uh, purposeful for us. Lit podcast, same thing. Uh, different topics, different ideas, trying to involve more people. Uh, I know he, uh, Mr. Adams has guests on there. I know um. Nessus Capoletti was on there recently. That was one of my favorite ones. Very exciting. So good stuff. And then next is our partnerships. Um, again, these are all brand new this year, all um, great connections, mass insight. Is um. Has a lot to do with the AP information I, I shared with you. They're all about equity and access to uh, rigorous uh, coursework. And in this case, uh, AP. They help um, open doors to students. They also support students, for example, giving students mock exams. And then they're graded out and the teachers don't grade them. The outside mass insight can grade them and give feedback. To our teachers and our students. Each teacher also has a one-to-one content coach. From the group that has experienced teaching that. So it's always nice to get that coaching and support. So that's also offered as, as part of this partnership. And so I know uh, Dr. McGuire and her leadership team also has regular meetings with mass insight groups who look at our data, look at our um. Enrollment, look at how we're doing things and guide us and give us direction on that feedback very specifically to. Situate high school. So wonderful relationship there, working out great, as you saw some of the numbers. And we're very excited to uh, continue to improve on that. Mass Partnership for Youth, again, new this year. This is a, a nonprofit group of former administrators, superintendents, counselors. They offer professional development. Uh, in a variety of ways. Typically of webinars. That uh, teachers can take advantage of. This was mentioned earlier in my presentation where. During that asynchronous, asynchronous learning opportunity, some of our teachers would pick. Options that Mass Partnerships for Youth. Supported or offered us. Another example is that was a presentation for our staff on student safety. So if you Google Mass Partnerships for Health, you'll see all the great opportunities and supports they offer school districts. And we're taking full advantage. And the last one here is uh, Bridgewater State University. Uh, we have strong ties there. Uh. Mistress and I are uh, part-time faculty there. Um. So we are, we're also graduates uh, there, you know. Postgraduate. So we were able to secure this. Uh, kudos to Miss Triscoll for that. We meet monthly with this group and these are, these are movers and shakers from Bridgewater State. Only a handful of districts in the state have partnerships with Bridgewater. So we're very fortunate to do that. Some of the things that we've done to date is we work with their student teachers. And they told us the other day at our meeting that we have a record number of more student teachers. So I want to thank. Our middle and high school staff that have accepted student teachers into their classrooms. Uh, it's a two-way learning experience. We learn from new teachers and they certainly, they learn from veteran teacher. And quite honestly, it's a recruiting process for us too. We get a great student teacher. We want to keep them. We want to hire them. So it's a really good mutual partnership there. I mentioned really the SCI endorsement. Course that Bridgewater State offered us. The other way to do that is each teacher would have to go sign up individually. Lot of red tape, lot of work. Uh, we created a cohort where our teachers could be together. Uh, again, at a very discounted price and savings to the districts. So another good opportunity there. Right now, we're looking at uh, further coaching and supports from Bridgewater State. Uh, professors or experienced educators that uh, from Bridgewater State. Uh, we'd like to see them come work potentially with some of our uh, teachers or administrators. And we'd also like to them to offer um, uh, leadership cohort. Um, for our staff hosted by Situate. So for example, any of our teachers or educators that want to get a um, administrative certification. Uh, could take courses and Bridgewater would come and we'd be the host. Uh, site for that to make it convenient for our teachers and to be able to recruit more of our teachers to have leadership opportunities. So. Just a few examples. Uh, we'll, and they offer a bunch of other PD opportunities for our staff. Uh, for college credit. And now we get into the finance and human resources slide. Um. You know, one of the things I think we're most proud of, that we heard loud and clear when we came in as a team, um. Is transparency and budgeting. Um, as you'll see this Saturday, um. You know, we're going to pull it off, put it all, put it all out there for you to see. We're going to answer questions. We're going to get feedback. And then, you know, we go before the select board. We go for uh, school committee, obviously, but this um. This will be posted and available, will answer questions. So I, I really think that's helped us because um, it earns trust. And I also think it shows folks that we're um, reliable stewards of their tax-paying money. So we're, we're proud of that. We'll continue to do that. You know, one things we're proud of obviously uh, is the removal of kindergarten fees. That's a, over a five-hundred-thousand-dollar savings for our families every year. We've absorbed that responsibly. And when I was hired, I heard that is one of the main. Areas of concern were all the fees and our, our buildings. And so that will fall under this as well. We talked a little bit about that. Um, so I said my goal as superintendent. Before I, you know, leave this great district at some point when I retire, hopefully, is that we get rid of all these fees. As a parent, I've lived this. I'm a big believer in if public education should be free, that means everything. I call them taxes. So we got rid of the kindergarten. So we got rid of the kindergarten one, I'll share a little bit when we get to next steps on what we'd like to do for next year. But we're moving towards that very responsibly. HVAC enhancements in the buildings, you know, shout out to Doc Dutch and his team. Our town partnerships, another partnership that doesn't, isn't put on paper, but our town or the town administrator. And I talk regularly, we meet all the time. And I think that's very important to have that relationship or finance director at Town Hall. Very strong relationships and good communication, which helps us. So we went through the CARES money. We took advantage of that in, in brought our, you know, from what I've heard, our, our school HVAC systems. Up to the best standards they've been at for years. You know, so that's a smart use of those monies where it doesn't hit your budget. What we also found. The last couple of years is that our buildings and our budget didn't have a maintenance budget line item. So we're always going to the town for capital money or for. Overrides or things like that, I guess, and we want to avoid that. You know, we're looking to, to, to get a new school, a new elementary school. We want to show the community again. That, you know, this is the last time for a while because we're, we're starting maintenance budgets that are. Proactive and preventative. We're, we're addressing issues in our buildings now. And we're not waiting like windows, for example, and flooring, roofs. And things like that between this and capital, we're addressing those things. So that we won't need new buildings and our, our students and staff will have buildings they're proud to be in. So. That maintenance line item is in there this year and we look to even increase it for next year because it's working. Capital initiatives. Again, there was, there were capital items that were approved in years past that weren't being acted on. Right away, we started working on them, we're in the process of getting quotes and putting those things. You know, those, those projects into play right now. And then the ones we really recently approved on, we're also in the works of getting those done. So we'll be happy to share those out. A lot of work will be happening over the summer. We're getting quotes now and works in progress. And there's a lot of great things. I know Dr. Dutch has shared those in the past. But I wanted folks to know that's really big commitment and, and a kudos to our town, you know, capital. A request for being approved through all the different measures in a town meeting. So it's really helpful for us as we've been ahead. I talked about the maintenance budget line and negotiations. We negotiated thirteen memoriam of understandings. Who's with six different unions this, this, this year. And we haven't even started the upcoming contract negotiation. So. A shout out to our school members that have put a lot of time and effort into those committees. A shout out to our negotiation teams, shout out to our negotiation leadership team and their. Membership teams and their leadership, they've been very. Collaborative and they've moved us in the, in a positive direction. And. Pretty soon we're starting six new negotiations with all our unions. I'll touch base on that a little bit later. So that's why that's there. And then food service improvements. A quick story here and I'll, and I'll wrap up soon, I promise. When we were negotiating with our food service personnel. You know, it really went well and we just asked, what, what can we do to help you? And we asked that to all our unions, what can we do to support you? And there were a couple of dishwashing machines that hadn't been working in years and they needed to be replaced. So I, again, with a collaborative approach, I asked the membership, the cafeteria workers to work with Mr. Stevens. Come up with a prioritized list of their needs that will make their life easier, make their product better and in turn make it better for our students. They gave us a list and we acted right on it. And two of those things were new dishwashers at. At the high school and one other, the elementaries, I believe. They're in, they're being installed and we're acting on that. So we'll continue to do that. And again, they're happy, we're happy, they're happy, but it's, it's not a big favor to ask, it's just responsible budgeting and paying attention to the needs of our districts. Personnel, obviously, it's the people. The programs are great, they allow for consistency, they allow for uniformity, but the people are the most important thing. Our hiring is some of the most important thing we do. You know, and I know. Ms. Donahue, Bonnie Donahue has really been working hard on posting our jobs to a lot more places that are. Accessible to more diverse populations that we hadn't been doing. She's been very, our principals have been very cognizant of recruiting diverse populations into our district to reflect. Students that we have in front of us and the families. And all these numbers are small, the increases are huge. Prior to fiscal year twenty-one, we hired 1.1, 9%. Non-white staff, diverse staff, not necessarily non-white, not diverse, let's put it that way. And this year, we've, excuse me, last year, it went up to 2.38. So that was doubled. And then this year, we're already at 3.17 and climbing. It's just being aware of it, it's just, again, recruiting, but it's also sharing our story and what a great district this is, is to come and work for. And I think word of mouth spreads. So just real proud of that work and, and our, our team's work and to, those numbers will continue to go up and reflect. Our student population. And then something we did recently here is the increased substitute rates. Again, we noticed that they weren't appropriate. We have great substitutes, they do a vital, they perform a vital role to our. District and we want to make sure they're compensated appropriately. So. That's out of respect, but it's also out of competing markets and we want to keep those folks and recruit more and make sure they stay here. So just wrapping up with a little quote that I appreciate that I think we live by, we talk about moving from good to great. It's, it's not by chance or circumstance that school districts become great. It's largely a matter of conscious choice and discipline. So all these things that you saw tonight are very conscious choices, they involve a lot of people. I think everyone in our district can say they had a role in, in the things that were happening here tonight, I share with you. But it's also discipline, ensuring that we follow through, we keep an eye on these things, we look at what the data is telling us, we listen to people. And we respond and we're transparent. So that is a continued model of ours, it's something we'll, we'll do. I'm going to finish up here. By just sharing with you what we can expect in the future, some things we're working on and. The first one is the vision value reflected in our upcoming budget. So again. Some little teasers of things to talk, that we'll be talking about Saturday and beyond. The first one is to collaborate with our six unions and on our contracts. So that they're equitable, fair and reflect our appreciation of our great and hardworking staff. And they also work towards establishing where our district goals are. Those all can be accomplished during negotiations. So that's important to us, that's in our budget. The next one is, is continued removal of fees that I talked about earlier. We, we accomplished kindergarten last year, we're looking to knock off, if we can, the athletic fees this year. And it goes back to equity. We don't believe that people should have to play to participate in athletics. Hopefully the people will appreciate not having to dish out so many, much money. Hopefully kids will now play more sports. And again, so that's a commitment we're looking at and we don't have to sacrifice other things to do that. Believe we can implement that in the budget. So something we're looking at as well as, as again, a recommendation to our school committee. And after that, in years to come, we still have transportation. So we, we're looking down the road to also have free bus, free transportation. And free parking for our senior class in, in juniors and seniors in the parking lots. Those are things in coming years that we'll be working on as well. All these things total close to a million dollars per year. So these are extremely. Cost effective savings to our community members that we're committed to make happen. And so again, it's going to take some visionary budgeting. Which we're working on and we'll be, we're looking forward to sharing that on Saturday and then the following Thursday and beyond. Next one is our elementary, elementary building project. We just got word back from the MSBA that they're, they're looking at committing to a combination of, of two schools. Not just the ones, they're looking at combining Hattaway and Cushing. That's a big deal to us. The good news for this year is that we're already ahead of schedule on the eligibility phase of this project. We got all our paperwork and responsibilities completed. Months before they would do, so we're going to be on the March second agenda. Of the MSBA to approve us to move on to the next phase, which is the feasibility study and the schematic design. Where we learn a lot about the project and a lot more of the community gets involved. And so that will be something upcoming. There'll be a lot of more conversations. Just so folks know, if you go to our district website, we've added an MSBA link on the top. Right for us to be able to start sharing information as it comes in to keep people apprised of the work we're doing there. And the last one is authentic school community feedback. You know. This is basically us. Providing everybody, every single person in our district, the opportunity to give authentic feedback. On things we're doing well, things we can improve on, the school building project, a lot of things. And we thought long and hard about doing this and doing it right. Last year, we did a lot of surveys, we did Survey Monkey, we did Google surveys. Even talked to Dr. Bukowski and tried to get her expertise on some of these, they're really hard to do, to do them well. We're looking to do this in a partner, another partnership with a group that does. Research-based surveys and they're called thought exchanges. In which they ask one larger question, folks fill out. Their responses anonymously. So again, it's an outside group, so we protect everybody's anonymity, it's not from the schools. On a topic, we get student input, we get family input, we get community member input and we get staff input. So they answer that question and without getting into too much, I'll probably do a separate presentation on this, but what this company does, it's very unique is. Because when we get feedback from surveys. We collate them and we share back, that's a big part of it. What actually happens, this is kind of like a live survey, but we don't know, you know, to what extent people are feeling about specific topics. So if someone gives a comment about a specific answer to a question in this type of survey, you, you. Everybody that's taking the survey can go and rate that response. So from one to five stars. So for example, if I asked the question, what are your thoughts about? A new elementary building, combining Hattaway and, and Cushing. People answer that question with an open-ended answer and share their thoughts and they can do more than one. If I go out and say, I love it, it's a great idea, my student, my child will benefit by it. Everybody else taking that survey can now go rate that. Well, I might not believe that, I want to give that one star. I don't want one school, I want two schools, or somebody might give that five stars. So then they go and they collate all kinds of data. They give it back, back to us and that's, anyone that's done surveys before knows that. Collecting that data and making it meaningful to give back to the community is a lot of time and effort. So this company works with us to do that. And so that we may be transparent, sharing that. So I spoke. On the Thursday Thoughts and a few meetings back about a mid-year survey. I think that's going, that should be coming out, we're working with this company to do that, we'll be sharing more information on what the thought exchange will be. But that'll allow us really powerful feedback from everybody on certain topics and we'll, we'll be using them. On other surveys as well, but the first one will be about. Something to do about offering you feedback about the district, the direction we're going. This will help us align our vision and values to what people are thinking. And then we'll share that obviously with our. Various stakeholder groups. That's the last one. It's going to be. Community outreach to get your feedback, then collect that, share those trends and. Ideas that we got along with action steps back to the community. So they know we're listening and they know we're active. Yeah, thank you for your patience. That concludes my report. And me and the team will take any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Burke for that level of detail. That was. A great presentation, it really dug into a number of things across the district. So thank you for taking the time to go through that. So right now I'll turn it over to the committee to see if there are any questions or comments on the presentation.
Uh, Mr. Long, I guess, I guess I'll just have a couple of comments. First of all, Superintendent Burkett, thank you very much for doing that. I think that. I'm sad there's only twenty-eight participants on this, or at least through Zoom, maybe there's some people watching Facebook Live, but I wish that. We had three hundred people like we did during the, you know, onset of the pandemic. To listen to everything that's going on in the district that's not COVID-related. Because when we hired you, we had grand expectations of what you could do with this district, but you've demonstrated so far in a year and a half that. You're doing all and more than you said you couldn't. It's benefiting what appears to be everyone, all the stakeholders, including staff. Students and everyone in the town. So I just wanted to thank you for that, giving a really great overview of everything that's going on in the district, it's not often recognized, everything that's going on. Whether at the level of superintendent and the. Administration or from the students and, and, and staff. So thank you very much for all that you've done. And I, I don't really have any questions. I think you covered pretty much everything that. That one could expect. So keep up the great work and congratulations on. Everything you've done so far.
Right, respond to that, Mr. Long?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gates, I appreciate that. I just want to. Emphasize that this is truly a collaborative effort. I'm the messenger here. All these, all this great work and ideas came from our, our wonderful team, our whole entire staff. So, and again, we've got a lot of work to do. So this is, some great things are happening, but I think the keys that we talked about or that we're looking at is, is equity, everyone has a voice, everyone feels involved and is included. And that we're taking action on things and then we're also transparent about what we're doing, what we're not so good at, what we can improve on. Show all our works and I think that's what the best districts do. So I think we're on our way, we've got a long way to go, but I think we've, in the last couple of years. Our entire team, students, staff, the school committee, the town. Our families, our kids during a pandemic, I just wanted to make sure that people know there's still a lot going around. A lot going on and there's a lot of people working really hard to make sure this happens. So I'm extremely honored and blessed to be part of it. And I was really excited about your sharing that tonight. So we'll do our best to make sure that this gets out to the community. And so that more people, I know everyone can't make the meetings at, at school community meetings. So I will make sure that this gets out whether we, you know, work with Seth to get my presentation out there, but we will get this out so that more people can see it.
I think that's a great idea too. I think it's hard for people sometimes to be able to attend for, you know, sports and life and work and kids and. Just pure exhaustion, we can't make it. So. You know, and I think it's just the constant struggle of disseminating information in the, you know. In the times that we live in, it comes in quickly, it goes out quickly and it disappears and the new things come. Real fast behind us. So yeah, I think any way we can get this out so that. Parents are aware of the hard work and commitment to curriculum and. Curriculum acceleration and academic rigor and continued PD is, you know, is huge for sure, especially. You know, I think. I'm really familiar with the Atlas program. And I know how cumbersome it is and it's daunting, but. You know, I think this is that, that unified curriculum approach is, like you said, Superintendent Burkett, something that. Parents have given, you know, sent emails about over the years and expressed in school committee meetings and forums and feedback about. You know, differences in. How kids are learning, especially obviously at our elementary schools and you can see some of that has come out over the years in. Discrepancy in MCAS scores, which, you know, again are just one piece of the puzzle, but. You know, a piece for sure. And I think we've asked a lot of questions about this over the years and to me, tonight really is. You know, over the years, not just since you've been here, but prior even. I guess I see a clear sort of path tonight on, oh, okay, you know, that makes sense, like. Using a program like Atlas to have a unified curriculum accessible by. Each school where things are uniformly delivered to kids with, of course, each teacher's personal style and. You know, unique flair and interest, you know, makes complete sense. So that all kids are getting kind of that. Broad-based kind of uniform approach to curriculum across all four, for elementaries. It's something we've been looking for, for a really, really long time. So. Massive applause for that, for you, for hitting that point. You know, obviously the elementary ELA and reading programs that, you know, I'm super excited to see how the piloting goes and see what teacher feedback is. You know, obviously the elementary ELA and reading programs that, you know, I'm super excited to see how the piloting goes and see what teacher feedback is. Um, you know, what parent feedback is even from. How that looks going home and how we're seeing kids. Learning better or learning smarter um in terms of ELA and reading. I think um, you know. Certainly our first grade, second grade group is. You know, even just professionally, what I see every day. They need it the most, in my opinion. Um, so us coming in at this point in time and strengthening that up. Is, in my opinion, right on the money. Yeah, I I I think it's a lot of information, so it's a lot to digest and it's really, really exciting stuff. Trying to look at all my notes that I do. And of course the fees and everything. Um, again, just another thing that we've been looking at for so long to eliminate for families and the burden of that. I I guess we shall look forward to the budget presentation and how that looks kind of um. Vetted out through that this weekend. So thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Frandolini.
And I'm sorry, I have one more thing to say. Um, obviously, I just want to mention. That, you know, all of the the social, emotional learning um components, and I really appreciate you. Having that as one of the very specific bulleted, you know, highlighted um pillars tonight. Um, it is National School Counselor Week, so I would be remiss if I did not. Give a shout out to my colleagues and and over here in Situate and the hard work that you all have done. Obviously during pandemic times, it's just been critical support that's been given to students and families. So um, you know, if I'm being honest, like I'm. Fully attentive to your presentation and ignoring text messages from. Uh, teachers that I work with about students that are in. You know, need of SEL. So um, as a school counselor, our jobs do not end at three thirty or two thirty or whatever time your. Day gets out. Um, so thank you to the psychologists and counselors and Situate for your hard work and dedication to our children. My children have. Utilized the resources. And um benefited from the. School counseling staff here in Situate. So thank you very much.
And thank you. And I've given some shows tonight. Megan Gregory has done an amazing job at. The getting this organized, the uh, so the reading program. So she'll be a key person there. And I do apologize for how much I unloaded on you all tonight. So I think it'll take some time. And if you have questions, that includes community members or even staff members. Uh, about my presentation that come up after the meeting, please reach out. I'll be happy to dive into any more detail. Um, if questions come up afterwards, which they typically do.
Yeah, I would um thank you Superintendent Burkett for the presentation. It was a lot. I need to sort of. Sit with it a little while, so I'll have more questions. I guess what I would love to see perhaps in a future presentation is I noticed on each of the slides and I went back to check. That most every slide had all of the symbols in the corner, so the collaboration, personalization and personal excellence. And part of me just worries that while I appreciate the 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 level of detail. I'd really love to see you dig into each of these pillars more specifically rather than showing. All the efforts that touch on all of the pillars, because I feel like it gets diluted a little bit. And so perhaps maybe in a future meeting, you could take. You know, maybe each meeting or every other meeting, you can take a pillar and give us some examples of. The activities that are, you know, connected specifically to those pillars and maybe even some of the. Formative data that you have to go along with how you're achieving those pillars. So um, if that makes sense.
Does. That's a good idea. Thank you. Great.
Um, I think the, my fellow committee members have pretty much. Stated very clearly and concisely how, you know, my feelings towards this presentation, you know, it is, it is a shame, like Peter said, there's not more people. Listening because it's chock full of information that people ask about us all the time. So um. Will this presentation be, you know, aside from being on the SCTV TV website, will it be up on our website?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll, what I can do is have it shared out with Thursday Thoughts as well. Get out there, yep.
Because, I mean, although there are twenty-eight participants, I think half of them or more than half are. You know. School employees and. And us, which is too bad because, you know, we 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 did hit a high mark quite a few, you know, quite a few times. And and like Carrie, there's a lot to digest and I uh, I will also probably email you with questions. Thank you again. And thank you to the team for, you know, everybody that's put all their hard work into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and Bill, I think you did a good job covering over a lot of different areas. I mean, you talked about the different systems that we have. You know, coming out from the school, but then on top of it. I mean, we're such, we're very fortunate in the town we live in where we have Rising Tide, who donated to our nurses and a lot of local businesses that do that. Over the course of the year. And our PTOs, course, shore, I mean, the parent involvement is just. Um, immense in this town. And I've I have friends in some other towns who say we have nothing like that. To be able to see, you know, what we're pushing out from our employee perspective with them and our town is also pushing into it. It's just, you know. It's great to see because all it's going to do is benefit our students and our staff. Yeah, I mean, I probably have to watch this section of the video again to see, you know, to dig through it a little bit more. I think a couple of things it would be good to see when you talk about like the calibration. Um, you know, seeing our curriculum against the standards. And then the impact of. You know, the standards that are out there and what we follow. And then, you know, if God forbid, we didn't follow a standard because. Some of the things we've seen both nationally and then in local areas as well. You know, you you're doing this and it's not part of the state standards or why are you teaching something? You know, that we don't, we don't see in the standards and being able to point to, here's. How we are following the standards because I know we are and you, Ms. Driscoll, our staff does a. Huge amount of work making sure we do follow the standards, but you know. Showing that, I think will just give a little bit more um strength to the conversation. Um, from our side as as we share that out. And then. Uh, the only other comment that I had was just around the the PD that. You know, we're offering to our staff and you talked about the asynchronous learning. Anywhere we can, as we hear back from staff going from their um responses, anything we can do to. Either point them to an outside resource or. You know, improve our own. ED, you know, just to give our teachers everything that our staff, anything they need and they want to grow. You know, the Bridgewater State or, you know, some other area. Um, I think that'll just just really help us grow as a district.
I agree. Thank you. And we'll continue to do that. And a lot of that's from the feedback they offer us and what they need and want. That's a big part of it, so. Definitely, thank you.
Yeah, I think that feedback can be huge in terms of. Being able to support our staff as much as as they need it.
Right. Agree.
Yeah, but again, thank you to you and and your staff for this, you know. The amount of detail that you went through tonight, I know it was long, but it was a great. Presentation to see and I really hope that, you know. I mean, looking at the people in this this meeting. I think there's eleven people that aren't considered co-hosts right now. You know, in prior meetings, we'd have two. So I mean, being able to get this out even a little bit more through Facebook Live and into this meeting is. You know, great. So it'll be able to allow people to come back and see it later on and we can, we can push it out for. The community to really, you know, dive into when they start to have questions.
Right. And I'm assuming the people that don't have the picture showing are awake too, so um taking that as it wasn't too boring. A little long, but I'll I'll work on that. And I will, I will be honest, I had my timer set on my phone right here and I never hit it, so I'll have to go back and see how long it took. Um, I'm sure I went over, so. Thank you all for the feedback and um. And we'll certainly work on on future presentations to uh. Share um. In more detail and maybe more abbreviated, but this was a big, you know, I I think some of this will play out, like I said, when the principals do their. State of the schools, a lot of the detail will come out there as well, and those will be exciting things to look forward to, so. That'll be great to see as well.
Yeah, and it's going to be a great addition to our meetings as well. And I'll probably go out in the their PTO school council sessions there. Um, you know, letters out, they're being able to add that to our meetings and can get that heard as widely as they can is going to be.
Right. We'll promote it and share as well like we're doing tonight, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you again. I'll give you a couple of minutes break before we get to the next item with your name on it. So next on the agenda is the one. Um, opportunity for public comment in this meeting. If people want to raise their hand, I can call on them and ask them to unmute. Seeing none, move forward in the uh, the agenda. And I will turn it back over to Superintendent Burkett. Sorry, I figured you'd get a couple of minutes off.
Uh, no, that's great. Thank you. Um. So the uh social collaborative update, um, short one tonight, a lot of budget talk like everybody else this time of year. Uh, the review of FY twenty-two budget projection, um, which is this year. The effect of the pandemic on student enrollment, uh, which has gone down a bit at the collaborative. Um, and they're, they're driven on that kind of tuition. So uh, numbers are down. But manageable and on target to, you know, to be um. Be achieved throughout the year. Uh, they also shared the proposed FY twenty-three budget. Uh, preparation is underway, so the future meeting will be getting more numbers on their FY twenty-three budget, similar to the process we go through here. That'll be brought before the board of directors uh shortly. And they're also working on uh their school calendar for the next meeting as well. Um, so that was it.
Any questions with Superintendent Burkett? Okay. Uh, moving on, we do have uh the approval minutes. So we have the minutes from the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting in our backup. So if there are no questions on those minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty-fourth as presented. Second.
Thank you. Uh, Long, yes, uh, Dr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lomb?
Yes.
And Ms. Frandolini?
Yes.
And Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so there's no correspondence. Um. Let's turn it over to Dr. Dutch for the warrant that we have.
Uh, we have two warrants tonight. The first one is warrant S two-two-zero-one-two-seven, signed by Mr. Gates. Uh, total amount, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, those items of significant value uh. Coming from our revolving accounts out of the school lunch program, dishwasher and supplies, forty-two thousand. Seven hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-one cents. And that's uh one of the dishwashers that. Superintendent Burkett had mentioned in his presentation. Uh, out of our local uh funds. Special private school tuition, one hundred and forty-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. To four schools in particular, Higashi, Amigo. Uh, Cardinal Cushing and Landmark. And then collaborative tuition at the Pilgrim Collaborative, thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Our utilities, ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, electricity. Um, athletic contracted services, eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents. Specifically for a combination of things. Uh, buses for the ski team, fees, officials, ice time for our hockey teams. And police details. So that's the uh, that particular warrant. Any questions on that warrant? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Uh, warrant S two-two-zero-two-zero-three. One hundred and nineteen thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, again, the large items, uh, private school tuition, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. To the Cotting School and the May Institute. Collaborative tuition, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty cents to South Shore Educational Collaborative. Central Administration copier. Uh, seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents. And that's a um cyclical payment. It's not every month. Transportation, uh, five thousand, seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents for supplies, including a new radiator for the bus, for a bus. So those are the the larger items in that warrant. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dutch, for representing this.
You're welcome.
Is there any other business that members of the committee wanted to bring up tonight?
For our next meeting. So I guess, yes. If, uh, I know it was mentioned a couple of times, but for those folks who are watching or will watch later, can you just talk a little bit about what Saturday is?
I was just about to.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so our next scheduled meeting is this Saturday, February twelfth at nine AM. This will be the first presentation of. The budget to the entire school committee, um, and the first opportunity for members of the town to also um dial in and and listen to the presentation. Uh, we will have a a public budget hearing on February seventeenth. Um, next, a week from this Thursday, which will allow. Legally, we're required to do and provide a uh public budget hearing to the town. Um, as Superintendent Burkett had mentioned, he'll then start presenting to the Board of Selectmen. Um, the advisory board and other boards throughout the town. And this will be a typically is a normal. Conversation that we have between now and really town meeting when the town votes on the um, the budget number for the school, for the schools as well as the rest of the town. And then obviously, as we review that, as we have that first. Budget workshop, um, information will be shared on our, on our school website and be available for the town to review and. Questions can either come into the administration or to the school committee and we'll be, make sure that we provide any um, any details that the town is looking forward to. Um, be well informed before we walk into town meeting in April to our, to vote on that. That budget amount.
So so Mike, on Saturday, it won't be the time for questions, it would, or comments, it would be the following Thursday. For people, for. Community members to ask any questions about the budget.
We've had public comment on the last couple of years. I did go back because Kim sent the agenda to me and Bill earlier today. So we have had public comments. We haven't had a lot of comments the past couple. Years. But it is, you know, if people want to have comments, then they can, but obviously there's a lot in there, sort of, you take the time and digest really. That public budget hearing is probably will get the majority of the questions that we um. We will start getting from the town. Um, from members of the town.
Okay. You're right, there have, there has been comments at last budget, at previous budget meetings, but. Yeah. But it wouldn't be the only opportunity.
There will be a full opportunity from now until. Through next year. I mean, it's not something we've ever. Shut away from.
Okay.
Um, and then after that, our next meeting is February twenty-eighth, so uh, so three weeks from tonight. Um, we'll have the foreign languages providing and celebrating student learning. I will get information on kindergarten registration, drafts of next year's school calendar. And so. A topic this time of year with the town. And then we'll vote on the non-resident uh tuition adjustment, unless there's any other questions or concerns that people have before we um, before we vote it.
Oh, I was going to ask this at another meeting, but since you mentioned next year's calendar, are we going to vote on the end, the last day? Have we done that in the past, the last, for this year? Do we just?
We have tip, tip, typically we've done it like in the end of March, beginning of April. After we, you know, we make sure there are no more snowstorms coming in. So yes, we do. It's normally a couple of months later.
Yeah. Okay.
You're right, we go up to vote the form the last day of school.
What did you say the next date of our meeting was, Mike? I'm sorry, my internet is, it's the.
Uh, the twenty-eighth is our next regular school committee meeting.
All right.
That's the day right after vacation ends.
Okay. I guess I was thinking about um timing and the mask mandate stuff. Curious about timing and. Anything coming in from Desi.
Probably get that the twenty-ninth of February.
Sounds good to me.
And yes, I do know there's, there's no twenty-ninth this year. That's why I made the joke. Uh, since there's nothing else from the committee. Um, we do have an executive session for the end of this meeting. Uh, we will not be returning to public me, the public session after this. Uh, executive session. So this will be the end of our. Uh, public meeting for tonight. Which recommended that the school committee vote to enter executive session for reason number two. Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and reason number three. Conduct, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining. conduct, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Uh, uh, on the negotiating position of the public body, so we will not be returning to open session. Uh, so this time, I'll entertain a uh, motion to enter executive session.
Don't move.
Second.
Those are a roll call vote. Uh, Long, yes, Dr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lumbon?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And Ms. Brindelini?
Yes.
Thank you for everybody that's still on the call, have a uh, great rest in it.